I forgot.
Wait on that.
All right, I will call to order this special meeting and executive session discussing Unified School District Governing Board. The date is Thursday, September 27, 2018. The time is 1:02. Start with a roll call from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Kim Hartman.
Kim Hartman.
Barbara Perleberg. All board members are present. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, we will move directly to our first information discussion item 3A, update on curriculum approval process. Dr. Krieger?
Thank you, President Perleberg, members of the board. This afternoon, I think you are going to be treated with a discussion of curriculum materials selection and probably some related items to that by our distinguished panel of members of the Teaching and Learning Department as well as three of our esteemed principals. One thing that I would like to point out beginning is that although we are governed by policies and we will address policies as necessary, when it comes to revision of policy, review and revision of policies, which may become apparent here, that is something that Michelle and I have talked about down the road this fall that we would be looking at because even in our preparation for today's discussion, we have found that there are some that are outdated and need some review and possible revision. So just wanted to lay that out at first. Also, I think what you'll be hearing about when we talk about the adoption of whole subject matter curriculum such as the math adoption that is going on now, there's a process that we follow and today's discussion, when it uses that math adoption process that we are on now, is meant only to be the prototype because it's in progress so it doesn't have the results and doesn't have all the information that you would normally receive when the committee makes its recommendation to the board at the end of the process. So just a couple caveats there so that you know. We can go into greater detail on any of those things that you like, but today I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Nance and they have a prepared presentation first and then a time for questions and answers.
Thank you, Dr. Krieger. President Perleberg, members of the board, I have a number of friends here this afternoon that are going to help me with this and just let me briefly introduce those that are at the table and you can see some of our other teaching and learning team members are also here in the audience and if we need them later to help answer questions, they're happy to jump up as well. Right here I have Steve Williamson who is in, takes care of social studies, K-12, 29 schools, very busy guy. Barb Reiner, same thing with science, across the district, 29 schools. Jen Austin does some middle and high school math, she's representing the math people today. Paul Becker, English Language Arts and he's primarily responsible for the secondary language arts side of things. Nathan Johnston is our Fine Arts Coordinator, he also works with PE this year, so all areas of fine arts and PE. Michael Roberts, our Director of Elementary Curriculum. Dr. Chris Treat, Director of Secondary. Cheryl Redner, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. And I'm very happy that three of our principals could join us for the discussion this afternoon to help give you a principal's perspective. So Chris Osmussen from Mojave, Christine Bono from Redfield, and Lisa Hirsch from Desert Mountain High School. So thank you to all of you for being here and we'd like to go through the presentation because I think if you allow us to get through the entire piece and start with some of our discussion, I think we'll be able to answer many of the questions that you might have along the way. And so if you have questions you think of, you could kind of write those down and keep track of it, we'll get to those when we're finished with the presentation. So let me go ahead and get right into this. The first thing that I wanted to talk about, and I'm going to start this and then turn it over to some other folks here, but I think it's important to talk about the difference between curriculum and instruction. They are not the same thing. Oftentimes they're lumped together in the same conversation, but I think it's important to define what they are. There really is a difference. Curriculum is what we teach and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. Instruction is how we teach. On the curriculum side, what we teach is really non-negotiable. We get our standards from the state. Arizona Department of Education creates them, they're approved by the State Board of Education, and then we take those standards and work with what they give us. They change from time to time. Right now, we are waiting for the newest version of science and social studies standards, you may have seen some discussion about that in the media. It's been in the works for a long, long time, at least a couple of years, and so we've been waiting and waiting and waiting for that to happen and hopefully at the October board meeting, some decision will be made by the State Board on that. So we take those state standards and then we create our own curriculum maps. And in a few minutes, Mrs. Redner is going to show you the difference between the state standards and the curriculum maps. The curriculum maps are the course-by-course, grade-by-grade map where we take the state standards and help teachers map it out for the year. What do we teach in the first nine weeks? What should be covered in the second nine weeks? What are some ideas and suggestions that go along with how to teach those standards? Our secondary schools also have course guides. You approve the middle and high school course guides each year. There's been a group working on those and I believe at the November board meeting, you'll be seeing the course guides for your approval for the next school year. And then I also put up there, teacher syllabus. We hope that at least most secondary teachers, I probably would say all should have a syllabus for their class, talking about what they're going to cover throughout the semester or throughout the year's course, help students understand the pacing of that. I know my own son, who's a junior in high school, goes to that all of the time online to figure out what I missed for homework. All those kinds of things are part of the syllabus. It's much more prevalent in middle and high school than it is in elementary, but it's something that we would expect teachers to have at that level. The instruction side of things is how we teach and that's where teacher decisions, teachers make those professional decisions every single day. They decide on the instructional practices that they're going to use to teach the curriculum maps and in turn to teach the state standards, and they decide on the materials that they're going to be using in each particular lesson. Materials fall into two general categories. You have your adopted textbooks and materials, which is usually a large dollar purchase that the district makes. Mrs. Redner is going to talk about the process we are in right now for a K-12 math adoption. We've budgeted $2 million for that. It's not something we've been able to do real often because you have to have the funding to go along with that. It's also something that we hope we can catch up and start doing in the future on an annual basis. It may not be the subject each year that is expensive as math is, you may have to go math in a different subject that doesn't cost as much and then go back to the expensive one the year after that, but it's a big deal. And that's where, she's going to talk to you about the process we use to bring in vendors and have those materials on display and the committees make a choice. But then we have everything else that teachers use. And that has really changed a lot in the last, I would say, 15 to 20 years, some substantial changes in what teachers use for instruction in the classroom. A lot of those changes have come about because of technology and the available technology resources that teachers have right at their fingertips. In the olden days, supplemental materials were those things that when you purchase an adoption, the company wants to sell you all this other stuff. Wasn't part of the adoption, it wasn't part of the original purchase, it was all the other stuff they wanted to sell you to go along with it and those were considered supplemental materials. And 20 years ago, maybe it was longer than that, I don't know, but 20 years or so ago, that's about all we had, the adopted textbooks and the supplementals that came with them to support that. That's not today's world. Today's world is where teachers have at their fingertips all kinds of current events, daily news, materials they bring in from all kinds of resources from all over the place. We're using the word ancillary materials for those, ancillary to the basic instruction. And it's not the same from one classroom to the next. Teachers use different ancillary materials to teach the same standards as the teacher next door. And then there's everything else. We have intervention programs, we have special education materials that are not necessarily adopted because they're based on the student's IEP and the needs of each individual student. Barb will talk a little bit about how science is a little different from what you might expect. Nathan, in fine arts and PE, there's no adopted textbooks. Every single thing they use would be considered an ancillary material. And so it's very, very different depending on the subject and it has changed so, so much over the last couple of decades. Put a couple of quotes up here because this is something we hear all the time and this is something that I believe and I think everybody at this table believes we should be doing, we should be teaching to the standards, not to a textbook. Again, I remember many years ago when all I had to teach was a textbook, you pretty much went through it page by page by page, chapter by chapter by chapter, gave a test at the end of each chapter, gave it something else at the end of the year and you were done. We also were not measured by any kind of a national assessment or a state assessment that measured standards, there were no standards. You taught the textbook. Today, the message is, teach the standards, use the textbook as a tool, a resource, along with all the other materials that are at your fingertips that are available. I think we all believe that skilled teachers use a wide variety of materials, resources, and experiences to teach the standards. Experiences could be hands-on activities, it could be field trips, it could be guest speakers, it could be whatever you can imagine that would help enhance the teaching of those standards and skilled teachers use all of those things. This is the rigor relevance framework and we've started work now with teachers and I know a number of our principals have started some work with teachers on how do you get to a higher level of rigor and relevance when we're teaching our standards? And I've asked Michael Roberts to kind of walk you through this and give us some ideas to what this really means. So, Michael?
Essentially, if we want to look at the four quadrants, if you look at the ones to the left, the A and the C quadrants, those are quadrants that can often be covered by traditional text. They're fundamental learning pieces that can walk you through it. But when we start looking at application and getting deeper on application, moving to the quadrants that are farther to the right, the B and the D, we're now looking for students to take what they've learned in class and apply them to not just predictable patterns outside, but unpredictable patterns as well. This is where we really look at high levels of learning for students, giving them a skillset to apply what they've learned, not just in jobs that are created today, but aren't created today. Giving them the skillset to create jobs down the future, really apply the knowledge. We use things like primary source documents, in some cases, current events, pulling in whatever they can to build that kind of agility with their knowledge. And that's where we move to the right.
Yeah, I really think it's important to keep in mind that if you were to just stick to the textbook to teach, where you're just giving information to students, you're not going to get very far into quadrants B and D, you're not going to get very far on the relevance side, that you have to expand those experiences and teachers are always looking for ways to do that. All right, now I'm going to ask Mrs. Redner to talk a little bit about standards, curriculum maps, and then she'll get into our adoption process. And so to do that, I want to show you where you can find this information. First, I'm going to go to the Arizona Department of Education website. I'm going to go up here to Schools and Teachers and if you see where it's K-12 standards, you can click on that. These are the adopted standards. You go through and choose a subject area, Mrs. Redner?
So we're going to start, we're going to just focus today on mathematics, so we'll look at that across the board. So again, we can look at mathematics and scroll down and it breaks it up into grade levels. Let's go to algebra, so that would be in high school, and then those are the state standards that have been adopted. So when we click on algebra, you can see them. Part of the...
Maybe?
So there's the state standards and if we could just, you can see and obviously they're very visible and accessible for anyone to see that. So we have access to that, our teachers have access, you have access, so you can see where we're coming up with what's going to move forward to create our curriculum apps. So...
All right, so that's what we're waiting for, for science and social studies, the ones we have are fairly old.
And so what we wanted to do was to make sure our teachers, so our teachers were aware of those standards and in most cases, they should be because like Dr. Nance talked about, we just don't go page by page, we go standard by standard. And so last year, starting last year, we had our curriculum coaches work with the groups and have input from all of the teachers as to where the, what we call power priority standards, where they go in a curriculum app, and then be able to post it so that teachers can continue to pace themselves. So let's go down to secondary, to high school, and again, we'll go to mathematics and then algebra one, just to be consistent with that. So they spent time with their, again, their groups, representatives from all the different K-12, actually now pre-K-12, looking at a curriculum app. And part of what it looks like is, it tells them their pacing around it, what that quarter is, the timeframe to teach it, what, again, those key essential questions are and key concepts and vocabulary they need to make sure to focus on. And it goes through, in all those cases, the units and again, the timelines around it. And then the other part of this that we need to talk about is that those standards are changing and so we can, they're continuing to meet with them, it's not just one and then. So remember, we talked to you last year to say, we'll have 92 of them finished by a certain deadline last year. We did that, but we're still continuing to look at those and then updating as we need to be updating and then continuing to catch certain classes that we haven't yet created those curriculum apps for. So you can see that, again, the teachers were part of that process led by our curriculum So now I'm going to talk about the curriculum adoption process. So again, this is right on our website, we're in the process, as you know, of adopting a curriculum. So we've started our meeting schedule back in the spring. And so what I did was, and so you can see right on our website where this is all located, but if we could just scroll down for a second, you can see the timeline of where we started. So I started in April, working with the principals and what we had to do was, we had to ask for a wide variety of teachers. I didn't want to have it all sixth grade math teachers and not enough eighth grade math teachers. So I wanted representation across the board, I wanted representation from every school. I wanted representation from EL, from our English Language Learners, our gifted, special ed, what's that?
Parents.
Parent, we have parents on there, we have teachers and we have principals and then the four of us are in there as well. So everyone's part of that process. The committee is 75 people, which sounds a little daunting when I say it, however, it's really not. We usually start as a large group for a very short period of time, but we break it into the three levels. And so Jen takes the middle level, Mary Ann takes the high school level, and Donna Dempsey, who's our elementary coach, she takes the elementary people. And they break them into that and they really, it's a working meeting where they're really spending time going through what we're looking for as we move through the adoption process. So we met at the beginning in April, we talked about who those members were going to be, what the, and I asked for those invites and we got them all situated. Then we, then we met with, we actually met with the group in April 24th and we talked about what that criteria would look like. So again, I broke them into their levels, they worked under the direction of their curriculum leaders, and they talked about what they felt to be important. Truthfully, and they came up with very similar characteristics that they felt to be important, things like standards, but a little bit different. High school people want something that's a little bit different than elementary, but pretty similar. We were able to condense it into pretty similar talking points on what we were looking for. So then we went into May, we continued to work on that, it took some time to really narrow it down, we looked at some professional articles, we looked at what we really wanted our math program to look like. It's going to look different, the adoption's going to look different in elementary school than it is going to be in secondary, in middle, in high school. We have several options in high school. We have, I think it's nine different classes in high school from algebra one all the way to calculus and beyond. So different needs, different groups of people in that room. We sent letters out through an RFP process inviting vendors if they'd like to participate, they understood the characteristics we were looking for. We received interest from 19 vendors. You may have noticed, a couple of weeks ago, we had a bunch of things covered, so we were able, the coaches were able to spend some time and kind of really look at again, that rubric of what was created by the team and say, there were two vendors that really didn't hit those notes. So we were able to say, thank you, but you didn't hit our notes, now we're down to a comfortable 17. So we have 17 vendors, which all come with lots and lots of bells and whistles that they think are super interesting and they want to sell us. And so now we needed the people to think about what they're going to do. So we had created a rubric with three tiers. The first tier really is about standards, so we wanted to vet out as much as we can, if any vendor doesn't meet that note, then we want to say, thank you, but this is really important to our district, we want to make sure we're hitting our standards. So we're in the process of that right now with the first tier. We were in here, but we had to move, so our coaches were fabulous and we moved, we have everything at a school site where we're holding some off, they met for a couple of hours, a couple of weeks ago, and now we've opened office hours for people to come in on the committee to go through with the rubric and say, these are, we're ranking them where they are. The next meeting is next week, we'll go through the next two tiers, tiers two and three, and that differs a little bit depending on the level. And our goal then is as a team to sit down and narrow it down to three. So we'll narrow it down to the top three, but it might not be consistently the top three and I'll talk about this in Jan, I'll talk about when I'll be back to give you our recommendation. So those top three vendors will be narrowed down and then you can look at the calendar and then those three will be, those three vendors will be displayed and that's an open display, per policy, it needs to be, they need to be on display, it's open to the public and they'll be able, people can come in, there's a feedback card, anything they want to ask or look at and they'll be able to do that and I'll be advertising that once that happens. In November, beginning of November, the vendors are going to come in, they'll do the presentations, we'll have a rubric again on how we're going to grade them. We'll have those conversations, we'll again, break it into the three levels and then we will, in a perfect world, have a final, have several final recommendations identified by the committee in mid-December. I'll come to you in January and say, this is our final recommendation, a work study, you'll propose some questions and I'll be able to come back to you in January again at the board meeting and talk about, hopefully you'll approve that. Then this is where it gets really fun because then we get to order the materials and in a, you know, perfect world where there's no hurricanes and things get delivered on time, I get them, in March, it's a huge process. We talked about the people in our warehouse, they barcode every single piece of equipment and material that comes into our district, we're accountable for that. So they'll go through that whole process for us, they're phenomenal, we'll be able to pass out teacher materials mid-May and then, teachers like to plan over the summer and so we want to be able to offer some optional PD for them in May and over the summer and then start with continuous PD as the year goes on. So that's our, that's a general, that's what we're doing in math and we hope to be able to utilize the same process as we go through with other adoptions. So...
So let me jump, this is the same thing that Cheryl just told you about, but let me jump to aftermath, where do we go from here? So Cheryl, I'll let you talk about that.
So we were really fortunate that you all approved that we could spend an amount of money to adopt new curriculum. Everyone, but my curriculum coaches will tell you that they want theirs adopted next if it hasn't been adopted in a long time, so we needed to come up with some sort of system. Science and social studies, we are waiting for those standards. So we're able to do some things in both of those subject areas, we're able to keep current. Our coaches do a very nice job of working again in those curriculum teams and again, going out to schools. Our directive to our coaches is that they're on campuses 50% of the time working with teachers. They are on our campuses more than 50% of the time working with teachers. Principals call me or call the coaches directly and say, we need help with something and they're out there and they really do a nice job with that. So we were able to really help where we need to help and make sure if it's a material that hasn't been adopted in a while, then we were able to backfill that way. So then we looked at where we are with that. So if you look at the adoption work here, for example, if we go to math, that's the year we're working on it, we're working on that right now. It was, and you can see where it's most recently implemented, so our math adoption materials were most recently implemented in 2010, which is a long time ago. So then we will make sure it's implemented in 2019, 2020. And so again, Dr. Nance talked for a moment about financially, we have $2 million to spend and we will spend $2 million on it and that's a really big question as far as when we go through the process. And then the next one's world language and the last time that was adopted was around 2008, depending on the level. And so we really need to update that, we really need to keep current with that. Again, our curriculum coach is able to do that. You can go through and see the different years that we've gone through adoptions. AP is dependent on College Board and AP and so that will, that is just dependent on when they release their standards and for example, we know that AP is releasing some new standards in February. So when we bring the course guide to you in November, my caveat is going to be, I'm going to be back in February to say, I need to update depending on what they've done. But so that, they're on, they're their own entity, so we just play nicely within their sandbox on that one. That is our, and so if you look, it says as of March 23rd in red, that's dependent on finances. I mean, it's totally, when we talk about numbers like millions of dollars, it's totally dependent on finances and so we just need to make sure we're aware of that as we move forward.
So with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Treat to kind of introduce the coaches here and they just each want to tell you very briefly about their area and really what happens in those areas beyond the textbook because things have changed so much in the last few years. So I don't know where you want to start.
Great, yeah, might as well start with Paul Becker, our English Language Arts Coach for secondary.
Sure. When we think of supplemental materials for ELA, we're primarily looking at the novels we read in the classroom, that's beyond the textbook, they have a textbook, they use a textbook, but they typically look at the novels are used in the classroom and how that process is, how these books are chosen, teachers, we realize we need to kind of formalize the process a little bit. So building on the idea of a textbook adoption where you have committees of people from different types of stakeholder groups like teachers, administrators, media specialists and parents, we decided to use the same kind of process when adopting new books, if they're bringing, if a teacher wants to propose a new book to the classroom or if there's a question about a book we're currently using. So with middle school in particular, there's a version for middle school and a version for high school. In middle school in particular, there was an instance where a teacher wanted to use a textbook, excuse me, a novel that she wanted to read for her classroom and add to the list of appropriate materials. She filled out a form to kind of investigate what the literary merit would be, what instructional process would be with that, what sensitive content issues that might occur and why we should be teaching it in the classroom. So she brought that novel to the committee and the committee made up of media specialists and ministers. administrators, parents, and teachers thoughtfully got together and read the book to see what she was proposing and use a rubric to decide where the implementation of the literary merit and how that's going to be measured versus the sensitive content issues that might occur and what kind of skill the teacher would need to have if he or she would use this particular book in another classroom besides the teacher's classroom that she's proposing. So with that, we, we took about three weeks from proposal to completion. So we have a thoughtful conversation with people who are working in the classroom, with a different perspective with media specialists, with a different perspective with administrators, and with parents to decide how this, how this book would be adopted and how this book would be used in the classroom. And then after that conversation, we will also talk about what kind of skill the teacher would need to use when teaching a book or takes certain sensitive issues could occur, what kinds of processes that need to happen instructional. High school has a similar version. High school's a little bit behind middle school, but they have a similar version with a committee made above, once again, teachers, administrators, and media specialists. So that's when we talk about ELA supplemental material. That's how we approach that process and how we use those in the classroom.
And Paul, can you talk about, it hasn't been this way all along that this is something fairly new, even though there had been some processes in the past. It's changed and I think we're trying to get a better grip on the commonality across schools.
Right.
Rather than some of the independence that we saw teachers using in the past.
Right. So in the, in the past, you would probably have a formal, a formal committee of people or informal committee of people or a teacher that says that I like to use this book in the classroom and then, and use it for instructional use. Well, there's a, we decided, and this is fairly new, it started, the genesis started a little bit with last year with implementation for this year in terms of having functioning committees. We want to formalize the process so if we all know kind of what to expect when a book is being adopted and proposed. We kind of know what procedures are in place so we can have a supportive policy to work it through. Instead of having one person make a decision, we have a group of educators and parents thoughtfully talk about a book and in particular instance where it's used for instructional use, it's used for content, it's used for sensitive areas. So instead of having an informal kind of thing where a teacher would say, I want to read this text, or read this novel in class, it goes through a committee of people to make sure it's saying, it's for the right intended use. Sometimes I have my favorite book that I want to teach and I think it's going to be awesome, but once I give it to somebody else, they would look at me, Paul, are you sure? And then that's kind of how the conversation revolves around. We use that rubric to decide how to approach a novel, how to evaluate it so we can make that decision if it's appropriate for our schools and appropriate for classroom use.
Yeah. And then we have to rely on our principals to help make that happen, to make sure the teachers are following appropriate guidelines and venues and choosing the right materials. So we're working on it. It's a work in progress right now.
The other thing I think is important about that process is it leaves a footprint so that other people who may want to use that book at another time can build off of that thoughtful discussion Paul mentioned where we don't have to relearn lessons, but we can go ahead and say, okay, who's used this before? How has it gone? What sort of kind of thought was put into it ahead of time? I think that's a really powerful piece to that. Yep. Jen Austin, you want to talk to us a little bit about mathematics and supplemental materials?
Yep. So in math, we use supplementals to teach the full depth and breadth of the standards. And so what Michael was referring to about the adaptation and the application piece, that's primarily why we would reach to supplementals. We can also use them to gain more practice though. Sometimes that quantity of practice or the variety of the types of questions that we're asking our students, we go to supplementals to find those. And then for differentiation, sometimes we want, we need enrichment pieces or we need to remediate or ways of explaining. Maybe I explained it one way and they just, it did not land with the student. And so then I'm going to try an alternate way. And we use those supplementals to find those alternate ways to explain those mathematical concepts. And so a lot of the resources that we use that you might be familiar with would be the Engage New York. There's illustrative math or illustrative math, depending on who you're speaking to. The Dan Meyer blog, he does a lot of three act math. And so that gets a lot of the engagement and the real life application. And Khan Academy is another popular one across our district. And so we choose those resources by checking and asking ourselves, using that professional judgment of, does it align to the standard? Does it match our test item specifications and what the standard requires us to teach our students? And then also who created or vetted that resource? So we ask ourselves, where is this resource coming from? Is it valid for our students?
Thank you.
Barb Reiner, can you talk a little bit about supplementals and science?
Sure. First, I do have to say that the adopted materials we have are really standard-based research program. And so they really have higher level thinking and ordering with them. And so that was a foresight of my predecessor, John's wife, Janie Kaufman, to have brought some of this to our district. So we have both a hands-on component for K8 and we also have a technology piece, a digital piece to create blended learning. So we haven't had textbooks in science for K8 for quite some time. On the high school level, we also use a lot of the FET from the University of Utah. We use the University of Colorado, sorry, that one is from. And we use a lot of probe ware and we use a lot of gizmos, which are all technology-based programs. We do have other teachers that will use things from the Smithsonian, New Sella. And we get together collectively to find websites, especially in the secondary level, things like Cells Alive and Learn Genetics that everybody looks at and agrees that we put into our curriculum maps. We're really trying to put our supplemental into the curriculum maps so we know they're vetted. But then it's still up to the individual teacher's professional judgment, along with their administrator, to find other sources that they may deem important for differentiation or to get to more rigor. But what we find is the more engaging it is naturally, the more rigorous it is. So we're, we're happy with our program. And I would really say our science programmer is really second to none in the valley, so.
Thank you, Barb. Stephen Williamson, talk a little bit about social studies and supplemental materials.
Well, I would say social studies has probably had the biggest evolution. I think back to when I started teaching in the early nineties and the only thing I had was that ancillary kit. Maybe I could go down to a teaching tools store and pick something up. And now those stores don't even exist. So as far as ancillaries, all the primary and secondary sources out there are a big thing that a teacher can go and find pretty much anything they're looking for. A, you know, our, Teaching American History has all our important historical documents. We could go find newspaper articles from the Civil War, from both sides, from the North and South. DBQs are out there. At Mojave, they're, they purchased the DBQ project. That's a program that gives DBQs and creates an overarching question that students then would go and write a five paragraph essay on. Now, C3 Teachers, another example that has DBQs and kind of the same, kind of the same framework. DBQs are document-based questions. So you give a document and a document could be an image and there would be some leading questions that students would, if we go back to our rigor and relevance framework, the idea of analysis being, synthesizing, taking several documents and putting them together in an essay. All, all things that eventually students will use, you know, in AP classes and beyond. Now, as far as like current events, New Zella is a big one that are already kind of appropriate and can be modified. I could literally find a current event that I could use that same current event in third grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, and high school. As far as lessons with state standards, there's a lot of great websites. We have, the Arizona Geographic Association has already created lessons that have, that hit the geography standards pretty much K-12. Debate and discussion, there's a great site called Pro versus Con that a teacher could use to discuss different issues in the news.
Good. Nathan?
So in fine arts and PE, we've got here in Scottsdale, a little more than eighty-five different courses in fine arts and in PE. And with the exception of some of our visual arts, mainly at the secondary level, there's some textbooks that are used as references when it comes to skill development. And with PE, usually in the human growth and development section of the curriculum, there's a little bit more reliance on a, on a material. Everything else is supplemental. That's why when you go to a concert at one middle school and go to a concert at another middle school, you're not hearing the same songs by the same ensembles. So we have a district library where we purchase some materials for that. Sites also sometimes manage their own libraries if they invest their budgets that direction. But images for visual arts, music for all of the different types of performing ensembles, theater classes, they, teachers would access those materials in much the same way that we would just as consumers in society. We would go to things like iTunes, YouTube, Google Images searches if we're looking for artist examples along those lines.
And I think one of the things you're hearing is that all these supplementals, they add to the breadth and the depth of what it is we want students to be able to experience. If we think about thinking in those 21st century skills, using tools such as the ones that our coaches just mentioned, make it so that you can reach an even wider kind of group of students. But also you hear the use of technology so that we're using different modalities to get to learners, to reach them, to engage them so that these lessons are as relevant as they can be, not to just where they are now, but to the world that they're moving toward.
Can I, can I share something, I share with Dr. Treat. I was in a high school government class and we were doing a lesson on the Electoral College and we were using primary sources. And at the end of class, we did a muddiest moment. What was something that was confusing? And the student said that the primary sources didn't tell me what the answer was. And I, I said, well, I asked, so why, why do you think that occurred? And someone raised their hand. They, they wanted, they want us to draw a conclusion. I said, exactly.
So you've heard a little bit about the teaching and learning department and our responsibilities for going from state standards, curriculum maps for our district, to helping teachers pull together the resources they need, the materials they need. And then we didn't talk much about it, but we also help them with the instructional strategies that they use every day with students. And we're continually working on those areas. Well, our three principals are here because to be real honest, the buck stops there. They're the three folks on the front lines with teachers, with students, every single day dealing with these issues. And I've asked them to be part of this because to me, it's critical that you hear from the principal's perspective when it comes to materials, resources, and instruction and how that affects you and how you deal with that every day. So I don't know how you want to do this. Do you want to work your way up, Christine? And start with you?
Sure, starting with elementary.
All right.
So at the elementary level, we use varied resources, as they've all indicated, to meet the diverse needs of our kids, especially over the years with technology and as our teachers have gotten really good at differentiating. So for the elementary level, like Dr. Nance indicated earlier, we use a lot of supplemental or ancillary materials for RTI, response to intervention. That's not a one size fits all. We have to find the material for that child. We have programs such as Head Sprouts. We have other programs that we use that our teachers are good at not only using, but tracking the data that's associated with that, for that progress monitoring. We have programs in our special ed that we do not have district adopted materials that fits the needs of every single diverse child with every single child's IEP goals. So we look at programs through our assisted technology program that we use quite pervasively. We use lots of materials through our math and red field, especially having a diverse special ed and gifted population. How do we find those resources to meet the needs through Engage New York? Through those resources, our elementary level uses Time for Kids, National Geographic magazines, magazines that has grade levels through administration. We, we vet and we talk about how are you applying it? It's not a matter of buying a resource and then just giving it to the kids. It's embedded throughout that meaningful instruction throughout the day. So that's just some brief examples and I'm happy to answer questions after we're finished, if you'd like me to, however.
Thanks, Christine. Chris?
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me be here. So when I was asked to think about supplemental materials, my first thought was what's the role of our teacher inside of the classroom? What do we ask these professionals to do with their students that are in front of them? What we heard is that a lot of conversation about the curriculum, about the content, making sure that students are learning the state standards, what is expected of them to know and to be able to do. But that's just the surface. We also ask our teachers to instill in our students a way of thinking. How do you support your claims with evidence and reasoning? And so as they're matriculating up our students to the middle school level, there's a lot of conversation. And Barb started to touch on this inside of the CPUP materials in the science curriculum. When a student goes up to the teacher and says, is this right? We don't want our teacher to answer that question. We want our teacher to say, well, you tell me, what does your data have to say about the answer to your question? We want the students to begin that critical thinking. So that's a, that's a role of our, of our, of our teachers. Document-based questioning, what a great way for our kids to begin to learn critical thinking skills. We also want our teachers to spark intellectual curiosity with our kids that when it's engaging, the students want more of it. And so it's not just the role of the teacher to have this empty vessel, this child's head, and pour the standards into it. But it's really about this whole process of how do you have somebody learn how to think critically? How do you get them to defend their arguments with, with, with evidence, with reasoning? How do you get them to want and desire more out of something? So now the question becomes, well, what materials will, will do that? As Dr. Nance was talking about, you know, when I started teaching in 2003, I had this nice textbook and the supplemental materials that came with it were overhead, you know, overhead black line masters that I could put up and pop up there. Well, even back then, I was able to go online and to begin to see other things that other teachers all across this nation are doing. And I could tap into some of their expertise and take that and put it into my classroom. Within these curriculum maps that are not, there's parts of it that are teacher to teacher. So we might have a sixth grade teacher at Mountainside that has done something with that standard that their kids, it sparked that intellectual curiosity. It created an opportunity for critical thinking and debate with inside the classroom and it met the state standards. And now that teacher shared that with other teachers across our district through the Google Docs and the technology that we have. Teachers also will turn to things like, we heard about News ELA, ReadWorks, Scholastic.com, Ed Helper, EasyCBM. Teachers are now paying teachers online to be able to, you know, to go on and say, I've got this great lesson, I think you're going to love it. Pay me $2.99 and I'll share it with you. So there's teachers pay teachers, classroom serial, spectrum writing, grammar workbooks, daily grams. And I just asked one language arts teacher, where are you pulling your materials from? So I got, I have more. I could go on, on all the things that they pull from. For me, and I think for us at the site level, we really rely on our teachers to be professionals. And so I, I have a poem that I'd like to share with you about the role of the teachers and it's called Be Dangerous, a poem for teachers. And it's by Sig Bolos out of Northern Arizona University. Oh, thank you. I've had the opportunity to spend a little bit of time at NAU those last couple of years. And also NAU's been very kind to our district and I just, I made seven. I figured five plus Dr. Rick Tarzant. NAU has sent us down to some of our principals. They've, they've sent us down to the NAU Trust Law Conference that's held twice a year. And Dr. Gary Emanuel closes every session with this poem. "My mother sat rocking in the shade of our apple tree and reminisced about her youth of her terrible days in the camps. I sat motionless in disbelief. How could another people be so cruel?" So here we are diving into eighth grade curriculum, the Holocaust. "I asked my mother why they took her to the camps. She was but fourteen. She rocked thoughtfully for a while. 'Well, my child,' she began, 'when they took over our land, they came looking for the soldiers and their families. They came looking for the policemen and their families. They came looking for the teachers and their families.' My blood pumped hard, echoing in disbelief. The teachers, the teachers, the teachers. The hair on the back of my neck stood up as stunned as I was. I asked my mother, why the teachers? Why are these people of peace, oh, excuse me, they are people of peace? She rocked thoughtfully for a while. 'Well, my child,' she began, 'when they take over any land, they come looking for the teachers because teachers are dangerous people. Teachers cause children to think, to dream, and to hope. Teachers reveal history and the new ideas. Teachers bring society to reading and writing. Teachers cause children to question and teachers inspire action. Teachers are dangerous people. I asked my, I asked my mother, what should I do? I am a teacher." She rocked thoughtfully for a while. "'Well, my child,' she began, 'I know that it is difficult to understand. For in America, teachers do not understand their power. For in America, teachers are always in battle, made to see themselves as less than important. But because this is America, you must..." But because this is America, you must continue to be a teacher. You, the teacher, are freedom's greatest hope. Be dangerous.'" This is a poem that I read with my teachers because I want them to spark intellectual curiosity. I want them to teach the children, our students, how to think critically. It's more than just providing that content. There are times that a teacher may be overzealous and think that their lesson is, you know, that something that they've created is great, and they may stub their toe, but we have a process for going back and, and, and learning. We are a growth-minded district, and so I want my teachers on the edge to push that rigor, to get to quadrants D and B, where we're applying it, where we're making it real-world for our students. And sometimes the materials that are provided through the curriculum adoption don't hit everything that we need. We go back to what Dr. Krieger stated at the beginning of this year, we treat our teachers as professional, they know what they're doing. We've hired them, we've trusted them, and so long as their actions continue to match their words, they will continue to have my trust.
Chris, thank you. And then Dr. Hirsch, from the high school perspective.
How do you follow that? Uh, well, I'll start with my interview with Dr. Nance, the pre-interview. He asked of me a question about, how would I look at data and then how would I react to the data, especially if the data was telling me that there wasn't a lot of growth, or we'd hit, uh, what we would call a plateau? So I said, well, I would just read all the teacher syllabi, and I would go through and see how much writing there is, because that's where the rubber hits the road. So there's a hundred and ten teachers at Desert Mountain, and if you multiply that by six different periods a day, that's a lot of things to read, uh, but it, it didn't take too long to go through and notice commonalities, because the teachers are required to pass in their syllabi, they're in Google Docs, and I just have to click on math, boom, 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 any one of those courses, I can find what the thrust of the class is and what it's supposed to be. So that's a, kind of, the easy part for what fits in a box to share, this is what we do. When we were called to do this meeting together, I started to really think about myself as a history teacher for sixteen years and English, and the, kind of, the division of what's in your toolbox to teach the students is exactly what was described, but when we get to the point of needing something else, it's those questions that come, and a lot of high school kids ask, why do we have to know this? Why are we learning this? So we say to ourselves, sometime, I don't know, or we think about examples, and we want to bring in concrete examples. So a lot of times as a teacher, like, I traveled a lot, so it was really easy for me to bring in an album, to show photographs of things I took in whatever year it was, and then to really kind of drill down into how, what everybody here has represented, and I do have to say, this group is fantastic. When I first got to Scottsdale, I was, you know, under the sort of direction of my own self, know my resources, and I made an appointment with Cheryl Redner in October, and I just asked her, I went in her room, and she had probably a thousand words on a whiteboard into different, um, subjects and colors to try to get her work done on the curriculum maps, and that was pretty mind-blowing. And then everybody else who I've called over time, some in an emergency, oh my God, this teacher just did this, what do I do? So Chris Treat and I have talked a couple of times too, about what do you do when? A lot of times it's at the, the after, and we do have mechanisms in place, so that's kind of what brought us to the table, of sort of, you know, where, when things get dicey, what do you do? Um, so the other thing I did was I, I just spent the week after we met, thinking about and, and writing down all the questions that the teachers asked me, oh, come to my class today, this is what I'm doing, or, I just want to tell you that the IB curriculum, that, that there's not a way for me and the other French teacher to talk about the standards, so we actually bought on their own a supplemental from the international governance of how to teach French language, kind of, year by year, and they spent their own money on that. And, you know, you kind of say to yourself, well, I can pay you back for it, oh, no, no, don't worry, it's so good for my students. That's what they're doing, that's what they're doing all the time, while they're in France, trying to enjoy their vacation. I just gotta sneak in here so I can bring something back to my kids. Another teacher said to me, I'm teaching rhetoric and I really need to use this TED Talk, and I can't find it on, because we've got some access denied, and I said, well, go to the librarian and see if she can bring it up for you and find out how, so, it, wanting access to things, very passionate teachers who planned all summer to use this one document that may not be on the map, but there's a link on all the maps, here are suggested links to curriculum that's good for students. Another one asked me, um, or another day, so I used to also teach math, I took calculus in high college, and I walked into Kathy Sherry's class when she was teaching, um, the volume of revolution. Not sure if you all know how that flies and why you have to know that, but it actually is pretty important when you're talking about engineering or building anything. So instead of trying to draw something herself, click, 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 there's the Khan Academy, here's a three-dimensional volume, and how it's, and, and then sliced it and can move it around this way, so all the students could take their notes, take out a, a, you know, pencil and write down the link, and then go home and study that later. So that's a, that's a real, true example of making something also come to life for the students. Another thing that happened, um, a teacher was showing a segment of Saving Private Riot, and this is in the World War II course, and he wanted to show the students about, uh, what following orders could look like for somebody, and that, you know, the movie won a lot of awards and it made a lot of sense, what is it rated? Well, they have permission slips, and there's a big process to get that film into the classroom, and we're not gonna show it, you know, for three days running. But the point is that the teachers are smart people who are passionate, not just about their subject area, but about the kids and what, what they're gonna get out of it. Just, you, kind of, easy ones, like pictures of manifest destiny, things that you see in a classroom, you see it every day, you start to, that starts to sink in for the students. There's Google Scholar, I'd never even heard of it till a couple of years ago, where a teacher wanted a student, the students, to read a dissertation. I don't know if, I, I, it was so awesome, he's just showing them, and so this is how a dissertation is set up, and then the students were able to annotate a dissertation right there. So those are the kinds of things that aren't on the maps, but when I do have questions, I call the coaches, uh, some of our teachers call the coaches directly. A lot of us are nervous people to want to show things and share with our students, and knowing how our parent body is so active and hands-on, that we want to do the right thing all the time. So I think that's kind of a really good brush stroke of what I go through with curriculum, and how much I care, and really get excited right before I got here. A teacher's like, please come to my room, please come to my room. I walked in and she was trying to teach them how to learn the reflexive verbs in Spanish, so she, she had, it, I mean, I, this is safe to say, she had them download an app, a free app, on stop-motion, and it drew, the kids drew the pictures of somebody pulling up a, you know, to cover themselves, to wash themselves, to shave themselves, and it, they will never forget that. They're gonna ace the test when they're seniors taking the AP. So those are the kinds of things that go on all the time.
Lisa, thank you. So to conclude, I want to go back to what Dr. Krieger started with. We have policies that are out of date and need to be revised, and Michelle and I have had this conversation, and, um, we'll be looking at that, and under the attorney's guidance, is how we rewrite and, and make policies appropriate. Some of our policies were written long before we had what these folks have been talking about, and so they need to be revised and, and brought up to date, and I know we'll be working on that over the next few months. With that, I'd like to just see if you have any questions, not necessarily for me, but for anybody that's here.
Alrighty, thank you all.
Thank you.
Start with questions. Anybody? Board member Hartman?
I'll start with a couple, I mean, I have a ton. It's like, candy cane or something, but, first of all, you know, I just have to say that, um, I'm in here thinking, why are so many of our, you know, leaders here in this room at the same time, and, and I'm looking, I looked at the agenda, I knew the agenda, but I thought, and it's clear to me now, the robust talent that it takes to actually accomplish this, whether it's the design, or the selection, or the implementation, it really takes a talented, incredibly talented team, so, um, thank you. First of all, it was an excellent presentation, appreciated it. Um, I'll just ask a couple of questions, because I'm sure we'll just pepper them around, and they're in no particular order. Um, oh gosh, I probably should put some particular order to them, but, um, so, can I, can I just call by, our first name's okay, 'cause like, we kind of remember that?
Paul.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think it was Paul, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I'm, when we're talking about supplemental in ELA, um, I noticed that you'd use the word novel as opposed to literature, and I'm just wondering, is that important in today? I mean, what does that include, exclude? Why is that choice made in general?
Well, I mean, it's just a choice of words, I guess, I mean, 'cause when they're reading novels or really reading literature, it's, it, the books they're choosing, the books we select have significant literary merit, so, um, so if you use the standards as, as they're written, so we have literature text and informational text, so it's probably a better choice there, but in terms of looking at comparing what's a textbook and what a smaller version of the textbook, teachers, single teachers in particular, tend to use the word novel, and it might be an outdated term, but it, that's the distinction between the two. But in terms of what they're selecting, they're, they're, they're selecting pieces that have high degree of literary merit, as compared to award winners, as compared to media sites, like commonsensemedia.org, those kinds of, uh, resources to help teachers select what will give the best bang for the buck in terms of impact for instruction, and what is the best resource to teach a particular standard. So that's the choice of words, but in terms of looking at, to me, it's just, it is interchangeable. As we talk about literature, we're talking about everything, whether it's plays, or drama, or personal narrative, or all encompassing, well, novels have a specific subset of, we're talking about a, a book that's read, written by an author, published in a, in a shorter form, shorter form than a textbook would be.
So, um, okay, I appreciate that, and I just was wondering, oh, and I, I'm coming out from wearing my parent hat here.
Sure.
Two kids, I went K through twelve in SUSD, and, and just a personal, I guess, belief is, that extracurricular reading is so important and supplemental, because it does create creative minds. I mean, it really does provide a platform, or a scenario, or a frame, to really understand a lot of different concepts. Um, so, this is a really detailed question, so I apologize, it was my first one, but, so when we come up with reading lists, like, summer reading lists and things like that, to me, I, I remember the year, I think it was probably about two thousand and five or six, when, um, we got the no home, they said, no more, no more summer reading. Oh, I read. Right? Oh. At our house it was, oh, there's summer reading.
My, my house too.
Right, I'm like, what are you talking about? Anyways, where are we on that right now? Where do we see that as a priority? Because I think that's really important when it comes to rigor.
Well, summer reading, uh, I will say that almost all the campuses have, have assigned summer readings past summer, and it's been pushed through, it's the school sites to assign, so if a particular site wants to assign summer reading for their students for to read over the summer, they can. And, and that's where, 'cause the teachers are kind of in control of those assignments, and what they do with them, what they want their students with them. I was an AP teacher for years, and I had summer reading every year, because there was not enough time to cover the things I wanted to cover to prepare them for the test, and to build the enriching class I wanted to build. So what I used for that summer reading process for my classes was to help them transition from AP language, which is primarily informational text, to literature text. So, um, what we want to do with summer reading is, you know, we want to have those conversations where I've, each, as each site begins to develop their own summer reading programs, to kind of have like a parameter of approach of what best practices are regarding summer reading, uh, making sure the reading material is gonna prepare them for the classroom, making sure the reading material is gonna challenge their minds, make sure they're, and, and also honors the idea this is summer too. So each school site kind of will determine that process, um, every school has, again, offered summer reading in the past, and especially this past summer. But in terms of aligning to what we want students to be able to do, encouraging reading as a habit, encouraging reading as a literacy, um, that's a conversation we continually have to make sure they're also utilizing best practices in the classroom, make sure they're just not reading just for the sake of reading, they're reading, they're reading something to gain something out of it, to develop their reading and writing skills in that particular class for that particular year.
So if I can just follow up, just, so from an, an actual execution standpoint, I'm looking kind of more at middle school, high school, how is that applied with fidelity? What does that look like at?
Mahatma. So, we did assign summer reading, and so, um, the books were published to our website, our sixth grade teachers were able to talk to our seventh grade teachers, or, or, let me rephrase that, our sixth grade teachers were able to share with their sixth grade students that were rising into seventh grade what the expectation was, and write, the seventh grade teachers talking to seventh grade students as they rose into eighth grade, and then we relied upon our feeder schools to get the word out, but it was also posted on the website. One of the main concerns for us is that we don't want the students to do summer reading and then come in on day one and have an assignment, right? And then we didn't have any, we didn't have any, uh, lesson that goes with it. So there is a project that goes with it. For us, it's, we're calling it a one-pager, where there's some artwork that kind of describes the, the plot structure, there might be some significant quotes that the student found over, over the summer that are embedded and weaved into it, but the assignment itself isn't due until about two weeks into the school year. Um, and then even then, you know, we have students that didn't complete it, right, over summer, or that maybe they just moved in, so they have that time to get it in, and we offer a little bit of flexibility with our students, because we know it was summer, it was for, you know, enjoyable reading as well. But, uh, we push that they, they do, they, they do the, the work, and, um, they share then what they read, um, off that list with their peers inside of those classrooms, to kind of spark that curiosity with one another, because, oh, you read that, I'd like to go read that too, my book did this, and, to get that off the ground.
So I just pulled up our website to answer that question, very, very similar, um, but the, there's so many courses, so when you click on the English summer reading, for instance, it'll list the name of the courses, it gives you directions, they're all kind of the same direction, you click the list, you get the list. My very first phone call when I was Desert Mountain principal last year was, I'm looking at this novel that my daughter's reading, and I don't approve of it. And so I, I know the drill, and I said, tell me what lines, and I, there were lines that were picked right off a website, if you don't like this one book, you can find those, and so I said, tell me more about it. We talked for a long time, I shared the gist of the novel, I told the parent she could go and watch the movie and see what she thought, and that there would always be an alternate for that student that wouldn't be penalized. Also, they don't have to be in the classroom if they don't want to be there to talk about the book, so there's loads of caveats for those students too, but what I think you're getting at is the value of the reading and, and why a school would or would not, and there's just so many reasons why or why not, especially when it comes to these high-stakes assignments for IB and everything else. The IB English didn't have, uh, for the, uh, summer reading, because they were all writing their, um, rough draft of their extended essay, which is a fifteen-page paper, so there's a lot of reasoning as to why or why not.
And then just, Dr. Zekos, so these are two examples, how, how is this applied with either fidelity or flexibility across all middle schools and high schools?
Board member Hartman, in the few months that I have been able to work with the high school principals, um, we have actually began these discussions, um, as some of my earlier concerns coming from parents is around the fidelity, the, the actual selection of the books, the fidelity in which, um, the assignments are across all of our, not only all of our high schools, but within departments at a particular high school, so is, what is each teacher, um, doing with, with the summer reading? And being a mom of a current eighth and ninth grader, um, I ask the same questions myself. So we are beginning those conversations, and we, in those conversations- So we are beginning those conversations, and we, in those conversations, we do see a lot of variance. Um, and we have to examine why. Um, the example that Dr. Hirsch gave is one of those that, you know, your IB students are not doing a summer reading because they're working on that extended essay. So we have to continue to have those conversations. And I know that teaching and learning is, like they did with middle school departments last year, um, they're also working with high school teachers and specialists to look at what would those selection of books be for the different content areas. Um, and we also have to look at, for instance, our AP courses. So for our courses that are governed by, or, or, you know, under college board, we, there's also a list of suggested materials and books that may also suggest to teachers, these are some of the things that can meet the college board standards. So there are so many different variables, and so I'm just now beginning to peel back that onion and see what they are. But I think we all can agree that the more we can come across a bank of, of books, um, those summer readings for our teachers, and vet them out, then the better off everybody will be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board member Kirby? So I'm going to piggyback off of some of board member Hartman's questions. Before I start, I want to just reflect that the challenges that we're talking about today, particularly with supplementals, is a good problem to have. Because I remember the days when the expectation was that every sixth grade classroom would be on the same page of the sixth grade ELA textbook on the same day. With fidelity. We don't want to go back to those days. I don't want to go back to those days. I, I have always said that I want to give our teachers the flexibility to teach and meet the needs of the students in their class. So I want to lay that ground rule out there first, that that is my fundamental belief here. I also don't think that we're talking about, I don't think we're talking about 80% of our teachers, 90%, maybe not even 95% of our teachers. I think what has brought us here today is a very, very small population. Um, it could be, count them on less than one hand. I don't know. Um, but we have issues out there that we've had for almost a year now, that have gone unaddressed. And so it's culminated into today. I first want to just establish that the way I'm understanding it is that the curriculum team is responsible for the curriculum adoptions. That what I'm hearing is that then the principals become accountable and responsible for the supplemental instructional materials. Is that a fair and true statement?
Yes, it is. And let me just add a little bit to that. We're also responsible for suggesting, helping teachers find, developing those other pieces as well. And so it's, it's not just the teachers going out there looking on their own. All of these folks are continually trying to find additional resources to help the teachers.
They're there in a support structure, but not as the account, the accountability.
You're correct.
Where the buck stops.
Yes.
So with all of that in mind, I have a, a couple of specific questions. First is back to Paul and English. English and social studies in this particular conversation will probably become the ones that get brought up the most. Um, I did hear you say that the approval process, or the vetting process for middle school and high school is a work in progress.
Right.
But what I want to get some clarity on, because I didn't, I didn't catch it. Um, I thought in one of those processes, you were including parents, but then when you were talking later on about high school, you said the teachers, the administrators, and the media specialists vet. So I just want to come back to that and give you an opportunity to, to provide some clarity.
Sure. Parents are also included in the high school version of this, high school version of the ELA supplemental reading list committee. These are, these are work in progresses. We're trying to search and work with principals to make sure they, they address, they, they get parent representation on the committee. Right now, we're, we're still working on that part of it. Middle school has a full complement. High school, we're missing a part of it that we're trying to fill.
High school current, so how long has the middle school process been up and running, would you say?
March of last year.
Okay, so even it's still fairly new.
Yeah.
Okay, and then high school, we're getting up and running.
August of this year. August 14th.
And even since August, parents haven't been folded in just yet?
We're, we're working on it.
You're working on it? So do we have a ETA on when the high school process will be?
I would, I mean, in a perfect world, I would have it by our next meeting, which is in October.
Okay, so very soon, is what I'm hearing. All right, then with, Nathan, believe it or not, so with music. Do you, you have, or have you considered a process with your band instructor, instructors, choir instructors, and the arrangements that they use? To have, you said, you mentioned iTunes and YouTube and things like that. But to ensure that they aren't violating any copyright laws when they're out pulling in those arrangements to then turn out and use with the children?
So when they use sheet music, that sheet music comes from primarily two types of sources. Either a, one of our newer technology resources where it's basically free resource. You can go in, you can download it, and it's, it's public. Or it's coming from a publisher, which is coming with all the copyright that comes with it. So if I go to, say, JW Pepper, which is a very common music publisher, uh, when I buy that song, I'm also buying the rights to copy it, to pass it out, to perform it publicly at our school, with the expectation that I will not send it out to another school, or another site, or whatever. If we buy that as a district, then we get a broader ability to move that music.
So we are very cognizant.
Absolutely.
Okay, and we're, we're operating within
Absolutely.
all the legal.
And if, if I have visited a classroom where I do think there is a little bit of a question, then that's a good dialogue that I have right away, because that's, that's not, copyright violation is not a dialogue I want to have with a lawyer.
Exactly. No, no, it's not. And I just, I just, I want to ensure, and I don't know all the law. I'm not a copyright, I don't, not an area I've ever.
It's great, best.
Um, it sounds very complicated. I just want to make sure that we are aware and cognizant of that. I want to go back to the poem. Thank you for reading that to us, by the way. You said that occasionally teachers stub their toe, and that you had a, what is your process at Mohave for the teachers who stub their toe when they bring in instructional materials that have crossed the line?
So we sit down and have a conversation with the teacher. What were you thinking? Why are you, why, why did you think this was important? How? I think it, it, it's a conversation through inquiry, to get the idea from what that teacher, what they were thinking about. And then seeing, are there other materials that could be used? Because we got a phone call from a mom, or we have a student that came in and felt that it was objectionable. Um, honestly, it hasn't happened that often. And by that often, I, I'm even thinking this year, I haven't experienced that challenge. But it does happen, because we're, we're, we're human. And when we push the, the edge of the envelope to spark critical thinking and curiosity, that might happen. So it begins with a conversation with the teacher. What were you thinking?
So, so I guess I'm going to look now at Dr. Creekguard. I'm, I'm struggling, because we know the issues that we're, we're trying, and I'm sure all of you know as well, but it's, there are examples of, that have been brought to us by parents of teachers who are inserting political activism into the classroom through the supplemental instructional materials that they're using with the students. They're not sheet music. That was a different question.
Wait, I can I, can I, can I just want to make a caveat? It's perceived by, I mean, it's always a perception, where I'm not in the classroom, so I don't know exactly the context.
I think it's been.
And I think it's important to know the context.
Well, I don't know that it's just a perception, because it's my understanding that there was actually, one of the books, even Dr. Creekguard said, was inappropriate.
I'm talking about the summer reading that's.
Yeah, and I, I don't really differentiate between summer reading and summer.
That's fine.
They're all supplemental materials. So my question is, are we, are we, um, is this really more of an HR discussion? Or is this?
Poor Dr. Bowman is not here. Let's pick on him.
Because I don't want to wait, I mean, these people, they, to board member Hartman's, these are, this is a lot of time and talent sitting right here talking with us. And so if we should be having an HR discussion, then let's have the HR discussion. But maybe we can't have the HR discussion until we have established policies and procedures to then have the HR. That's what I wanted, that's why I'm looking at.
And, and I'm going to jump in there too, because that's kind of my question as well, is before that phone call comes from that parent, what kind of guidance do our teachers receive before even entering that classroom on these types of issues within our district? Is that also a big work in progress?
You know, I, go ahead. Thank you.
So. There are several thoughts in here. First of all, I will add up, hopefully all of us will come together and add up to the answer.
Okay.
As the content coaches are providing resources and suggesting resources to teachers that are asking, there is built in assessment of those resources, and, and a de facto approval process. This is something that works. So and so at such and such a school has used it. It worked well. This is how they used it. There's a knowledge base that they bring across the district that helps. So it's not simply, here is a list of resources, go to it. There, it's a discussion, an intelligent discussion, based on their professional knowledge and judgment and experiences as well. Secondly, the situation that Chris suggested was the first step. My question to him, and I know the answer, so I won't, I won't really ask it, is, what happens the next time that teacher crosses the line? Whereas then it does become an HR situation. It's an HR situation, but not for HR to handle. It is still the principal's responsibility to handle it. Knows the situation, knows the teacher, knows what has been happening before. Even if they've forgotten the date, they have that in their file, because they have documented that first conversation. And, and the next step, probably a letter of direction that goes into their file, saying, "You will not." There, there are three parts to the letter of direction. What the person has done, what will happen to them if they continue to do it, and what assistance you offer as a supervisor. And that's in the letter of direction. Next time is a letter of reprimand. It's, it's our progressive discipline that we follow.
What happens after?
The third, the third step is a letter of reprimand, and, and that, the next one could result in termination.
Okay.
So progressively, and the principal is in charge of that in communication with HR. When he gets, when he gets to the letter of reprimand, HR is involved to make sure that the letter is written correctly, and that they haven't missed anything, and all of that. It is still the principal's responsibility to deliver, to have a conference with the teacher, deliver it, get their signature that they received it, and, and move forward with all of that. So that's, that's one, that, that progressive discipline crosses all forms of behavior of employees. This is one of those that, that fits. Next, the, the discussion of the, the books, and the, and what's going on in a particular classroom. Principals are expected to have ongoing conversations with the teachers of what is professional behavior, what is professional material, what, what, what are you doing in your classroom? Instructional. The, the principals are, in a perfect world, instructional leaders of their schools. That is our intent. It is always our intent. There are many times where they have to be involved in the management as well as the instructional leadership. But their primary focus, they know, is to, to help teachers improve their instruction, help teachers to make correct decisions. Teachers, as you say, and I appreciate you saying very much, 95, 98% are professionals that we trust that are, that are extremely conscientious about what they're doing every day. It's why we have trouble keeping our air conditioning costs down early in the year, because there are so many requests to go into the school on the weekends, and late at night. They're working really hard to do that. But it's still incumbent upon the principal to work with those teachers to make sure they're online. And, and because the principals know that they are responsible if something crosses the line, if something goes sideways, they're the ones that, that have to jump in. And if they haven't had a meeting in three years with the teachers to say, "What are we doing about materials? I see, I see you bringing in Playboy. I see you bringing in this. I see you bringing in that, you know, and we haven't done anything about it?" You know, no, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's ridiculous. So they are responsible for that. And we, as cabinet level, their, their supervisors are, are held accountable by me to have those conversations with the principals. And I know you hold me accountable to have those conversations with these.
Just can I keep, so some of this is personal judgment. Some of it's obvious, but some of the, the literature or novels could be just personal judgment. And it can get very gray, which is then where the parent
Right.
vetting upfront can help in those gray areas.
That's why they're included in the middle school group. That's why they're included in the high school group when we get them, because that's a vital point, as all stakeholders, including the parents, needs to be part of that conversation.
And that's, and that's really helpful on the novels and literatures, and literature. And I can see that process working well. But it's, what about the, the, the article, or, you know, the, the current event, or whatever? You know, something that was written in some newspaper about what happened yesterday, that doesn't have, you miss the opportunity, right, that you want to have with the students if you wait for it to go through this process. You don't want to miss that. How do, have we thought through, and I don't know the answer. It is, is kind of, if a parent complains about that, and then goes to the principal.
That's the ancillary material.
So a couple of thoughts. And, and Dr. Treatingen, and I've had this conversation just this week on two major issues. Number one, how do we become a little more proactive in helping principals and teachers understand some of these issues? And, and I know that Chris has done sessions on how to teach controversial issues. And Chris is going to be putting together additional professional development, and we'll have to talk about how we roll that out to teachers at the schools on controversial issues. But the other piece we talked about, which I really hadn't thought a whole lot about, was that a particular book, or a particular article, may not have been controversial two years ago, but it is now, or vice versa. And we need to continue to look at what was okay last year. But because of things that are going on in society now, it might not be okay, but it might be okay three years from now. And so we have to look at some of the things we're already using and have that conversation with teachers as well. But you have to also be sensitive to the times. And so I think those are a couple of proactive things that we'll be working on.
And that's exactly why last summer, we reinstituted the approval process at the district level for the summer, summer reading, where there seemed to be less control than, than the classroom sets in the, that the teachers were handing out and kids taking home during the school year. And so we, we did that. And that summer reading list approval process involving parents and professionals is, is important not just for new books to hit the list, but also to review what's on the list as they look through and say, "Oh, wait a minute, this book, well, you know, maybe Huckleberry Finn isn't what we once thought it was, or maybe it's being viewed differently than what we thought it was, and that's something that we should, we should look at." Having those discussions is important.
So as another point of clarity, so will summer reading always going forward be a district approval process and not the site approval? Or do we see that evolving going forward as well?
It should have been all along. It hasn't been. And so we're going to be working a little more closely with the schools to make sure that teachers actually do follow the suggested readings, and there's options there.
But, but who's, who's?
Sometimes teachers have just chosen books on their own and using.
No, but who's going for, for books to be added to that summer reading list?
Paul's coming in.
So it will still be a district approval and over accountable, accountability?
So the vision, the vision, sorry to interrupt, don't even interrupt you.
No, no, that's fine. I was just trying to understand.
But the, the, the vision of this would be essentially that if there's a book that's new that a teacher wants to add, let's say now he or she's thinking summer, and there's a new book that I want to add to this process this summer. That teacher would fill out a form that talks about instructional use, standards to be addressed, sensitive content issues that people should be concerned about, and rationale. And that form is filled out and given to the, given to the committee. Committee says, "Okay, we got this book that the teacher says he, he or she wants us to..." Committee says, okay, we got this book that the teacher says he, he or she wants us to read because she, she wants to put on the, on a list or read in the classroom. We read it and have that conversation after we're done, come back, come back together and follow rubric process of explaining what the literary merit is, why that book is there, why it's important to read it because literature is a commentary of what we're going through, right? And then whether sensitive issues. And then as a, using that rubric and use having a thoughtful conversation among academic professionals and parents saying, okay, is it by design what it's supposed to do? Do we agree with the teacher to make that recommendation? And we recommend either yes for approval or we recommend no for disapproval. And then, and then it goes from there. So if a teacher wants to propose a new book in that situation, this is the process system that's designed to help that process go forward instead of just saying, I want to read this book because it's cool, or I want to read this book because I think it's interesting. It's got to be, it's got to be a, a way to have a balanced conversation approach from all stakeholders to make sure that's appropriate use.
Okay, so now I'm confused again. So will parents be involved in summer reading approval?
Yes, it's, it's part, part of that. We're talking about adding a new book to the summer reading, it's not part of it. It goes to the high school ELA supplemental reenlistment committee, which parents are a part of, again, in October, the third week in October is when we meet again. I'm hoping to have those parents on that, at least two, if I can get two, to have them on that, on that committee. And then when that new book proposed by a teacher that he or she wants to use in the classroom, parents, administrators, teachers, media specialists, all people.
Board member Harman?
I, I just have a, a kind of a follow-up question. Because it's something that Dr. Nance said I think is really interesting, and what's controversial now may not be later and all that. And back to teachers, you know, the poem being dangerous and quite frankly, consistent with, you saw our work study earlier this week on qualifications of a future superintendent. Our number two criteria was innovative risk-taking, right? So that's something we want. So my question is, absolutely parents should be part of this process, but they shouldn't dictate the process. However, we can define it in advance so that, I mean, because you can say yes or no, you are part of the process. It doesn't mean everybody gets everything they want. So how do you define it between, you know, provocative, thought-provoking, controversial, right? I don't know the words you use, but it seems to me there needs to be some type of policy or framework or discussion document so that decisions can be made in a very complex situation. Because no two right situations are, or books are exactly the same.
That's correct, yeah.
So does that exist or will it exist? Because if it doesn't exist, it exists before, you know, everyone's on a committee in August or.
Right, that's a good, that's a good question, but, and we kind of experienced that with the middle school example that I shared earlier. So when we created the rubric and how, because we realized early on that we would, again, controversy is controversy. What's controversial for someone may not be for somebody else, right?
Right.
So we wanted to kind of give a, a, what's, working with media specialists and teachers and the parents in the room, we started looking at commonsensemedia.org as a, as a starting point of different things that could have, that could be a potential conversation or, and like my committee likes to say, landmine, what could happen, right? So in terms of making it official quote-unquote policy, I mean, that's something we didn't even think of because we didn't, but because we looked at how we took those controversial subjects, whether it be language or use of religion or that kind of thing. I'm, I'm being narrow, but you know, it's probably much broader than that. We put that on the rubric to see what the general things are. And we use examples from other school districts too, in terms of what they identified as potential controversial issues. And in terms of having one voice being directed as the primary voice or having one way of voice weighted over another, one of the things we did in the middle school process is to have some sort of governing norms about how we approve something. So at the time we adopted them, and it actually happened, we have two representation of each stakeholder group, except for the parent. We only have one in the middle school group right now, we're looking for another. But we have two teachers at least, we have two media specialists at least, we have two administrators at least, and, and one parent, but we'll have two. And there's more than that. But in terms of when it, something is approved, we decide our process of how, is it majority rule, is it consensus? How is that conversation, how's that work in terms of what voices get heard? So, so we, we decided equal representation of these groups saying that yes, this book is approved because of these reasons, and it needs to have a voice from every stakeholder group saying yes to it. So it's not like one is weighted over the other, it's like all five people in, in the process saying, agreeing that, that this book would work.
Can you spell it?
If I could just add to that, there, there are two pieces that, that we're always looking at when it comes to literature. One is if it deals with a sensitive social issue, we always are approaching, we want things to be balanced. We want teachers in the classrooms to present a balanced side, not weighted one way or, or the other way. So that, so that students have the, the facts, they, they have the story behind it and, and can, through critical thinking, come up with their own, based on their belief system and their family's belief systems, that they, they come up with their conclusions. So we don't give them conclusions, we give them a balanced approach. But the second thing when it comes to literature that I think is important, why we have separate committees of middle school and high school, is because age-appropriate is, is a category that, that we can't forget about. Because you could have, you could have a group of adults sitting around saying, yeah, this, this book is fine, but you don't want your fifth grader reading that book. So, so age-appropriate is another category that hasn't been mentioned.
So just to close out, and I don't need an answer, but I would encourage it as a consideration, is the answers I'm hearing are process, right? Who's involved, when they're involved, how often they're involved. But what I'm really suggesting is some type of framework, a filter by which you can take everybody's input and understand what comes out the back end. Do you see what I'm saying? And everyone has a different way of looking at it, so it's, a filter won't give you the same answer every time, but it'll give you the framework and the opportunity for people to vet their concerns. But then we have this framework, I don't know if it needs to be a policy, but something that says, these are the things that we're looking for, right? So.
Okay, procurement about, so almost like a tool. Yeah, a tool.
Yeah, there, and maybe I didn't say it clearly, but I'm, maybe, maybe it's the same thing, and if I'm, if I'm confusing, as you please let me know. But with all, all that framework, we have a rubric that, that establishes how a process and how the filters are that, talk about literary merit and talk about the ideas of the sensitive content for a particular book. We use that rubric document and also have teachers and committee members answer questions about these, the age-appropriateness and how it all, how it uses. Is that kind of what you're looking for?
Is that posted on our website?
Not yet.
Because that might be an interesting thing to have posted. Because that's a belief system almost. These are the kinds of things that we support and the things we don't support.
School member Travis?
Not to state the obvious, but I will because I'm good at that. Oftentimes, the, the people, the teachers picking these books for their students, they are parents themselves of the grades that they're selecting literature, let's say, for. So they bring that lens with them and that, you know, thought process to them when they pick a, a book. And it's been mentioned several times here, but I'll say it again, there's always an alternate choice for literature if a parent does have, disagree with the primary choice that the teacher has picked. And when we talk about some of these challenging books, that's where the art and the skill of teaching comes in, in terms of the dialogue of what is going on in the classroom. I'm primarily talking about English, but I think those are things that it's important to remember and what I consider in terms of what happens in the classroom. And, you know, I recall the books that my kids read. I don't read along with my kids while they're reading the books, but I, you know, I, I liked the selections that were chosen for my kids because they were challenging.
I read AP, I read summer AP reading list books during the summer when I was principal.
Remember Becca?
I'd like to follow up before then I, I bring it to you, but you need to follow up on the ELA, because I had a couple of questions that I wrote down, and I think it does come to that process. A little bit about that belief system, which I'll get in, which I'll, I'll read, I'll say now, because I think that's something that has to be determined and that it has to be agreed upon and put in writing so that it can be communicated to the parents. And that is what I think might be age-appropriate for my seventeen-year-old or sixteen-year-old will be very different possibly from what Sandy does. I can tell you, there's a huge difference between what I think and what my husband thinks. He clearly felt he was, well, I'm all going to, R-rated movies. But I, I did not want my children seeing R-rated movies until they were seventeen. I know, I'm old-fashioned. And most, every kid had seen R-rated movies. But that's just the point. There is a difference there, and there will always be a difference there. I happened to, last summer, get on Desert Mountains because I was summer reading and wrote, I read a fantastic, fantastic book. After I was done though, I thought, would I want my seventeen-year-old to read this book? Would she be prepared, well, it was my seventeen-year-old at the time, it was the daughter, would she be prepared for this? You provided three other books, so there's flexibility, except for, as a parent, the parent didn't pick the books, the child did. And I just picked one of the four. I didn't, wasn't told there might be controversy, there might be some very explicit sexual parts to the book. So there wasn't really flexibility in it. Because if that child picked that book that I did and read it, they'd been exposed to it and there was no flexibility. So I do have to say, we need to, if we're going to be talking about what, that parents do have flexibility, what is that flexibility and how is it communicated? Because it wasn't for me last summer. And that's just, that's a side note, that we need to be very careful because, well, I'm going to go back. I'm trying, there's been so much information given here today, and I have so many questions, and we don't have time for it all, I don't think. But I'm going to back up. One of the questions that I wrote down, because you had talked about, what people want in public school, I believe, is they do want literary merit to the material their children are reading. Now, we believe in creative writing, and we believe in creative reading, and I'm sure that is part of one of the standards. And at that time, the correct book will be chosen. But in the meantime, if I can, because I have my child, my children also read, they get to pick what they want to do in the summer, that can be their more creative outlet. But I would expect from the public school that it has literary merit, and from what I've heard today, it is tied to a standard and there is thought behind it and something is being taught that has merit. So my question that I had written down was, what are the criteria that these books have to pass to be in the category of literary merit? Because if we don't know what that criteria is, then that group of people cannot determine what that is. So I'm hoping that we have, and maybe your rubric, right? The other question is, do the parents and all the teachers read every single one of these books? Or are they just looking on the sheet of paper in which the teacher has written down, this is what's controversial? Because you'll run across that too, what's controversial to you may not be to me. So I know there's a lot of questions in there. Does everybody who's on that committee actually read the book?
Yes.
And do you have the criteria to pass it as a, you mentioned, high literary merit?
Yes, so we're looking at things like author's craft or structure, we're looking at the complexity of the plot, we're looking at complexity of the issues that the characters are experiencing. Can the book be read multiple times and have different conversations where it doesn't stop? We always try to find something new out of it. Now, these are general kind of descriptors that kind of get reduced down into categories of literary merit. Like one of them is author's craft, one of them is the complexity of plot, one of them is complexity of characters, one of them is, is representation of characters. So our books that have higher literary merit value have those books in it that where the author has woven a tale where the characters are going through a particular complicated process so we can break clean meaning and theme from. And so, yes, there are some books that are pop fiction, and they're awesome because I read them too. But why do you think there would be instructional use? No. But there are some books that kind of do both, which is great if it can. But in terms of making sure it's instructionally appropriate to use in the classroom, we ask the teacher first to kind of tell us how. And then we, as a committee, all of us, read the book, and if one of us in the committee has not read the book, they don't get a vote because they can't participate in the conversation. And so with this last book, last book we approved for that particular school, that's exactly what happened. Everybody read it, everybody had a conversation about it, everybody used a rubric to decide how to best have that conversation to make sure it's instructionally appropriate to use in the classroom. And in terms of looking at how, making sure that it hits the values in terms of instructional use and literary merit that we're asking kids to decipher and be able to cognitively, cognitively deal with.
That, that sounds wonderful. Now, do you document that? So that when a parent calls in and says, I do not find this book to be of high literary merit, you can actually have a conversation with that parent and say.
I can pull the rubric from my file and say, and all the rubrics and the report that I created saying, yes, this is what the committee thought at the time.
Before we go to the next train of thought, I didn't want to interrupt that one, but we are having a little difficulty with our streaming. So I've been asked to kind of hit the pause button for just, oh, a few minutes here to see if maybe we can address it. For just a few minutes. Let's go ahead and take a few-minute break, yes, five-minute break. And hopefully we just get it thumbs up like, never mind, but no, no, so. Five-minute break and we'll. Recording again, and we are resumed at three oh one. And board member Becca, did you have?
I'll just kind of pick up, because I have a couple of real quick questions for Paul, and they could probably answer. Once the process, once the committee gets the proposal from the teacher or the request, how long does it take approximately?
From teacher to committee or from?
For an answer.
Well, for an answer?
So that teacher will know when it can.
Well, given, given, we first have to figure out how long it's going to take us to read it. Usually, and it's usually a week, and then we meet the following week, and then from beginning to end, the whole process took about three weeks for this particular book. And I kind of envision that's kind of the same, might be the same for every, for the books that get proposed.
Okay. So then, I'm going to back, so this process has not been in place before. So this is brand new. So you said March?
March is when we started middle school.
Two thousand and eighteen for middle.
Right.
August of eighteen. So prior to that, it was just left up to the teachers?
For, well, not forever, not forever back. Steve and I both remember when, when that process was in place. But in recent, recent, sometime, sometime in the intervening years.
Since two thousand and five.
It's a long time, right?
Yeah, possibly, yeah.
So Dr. Nance, when you were, when you first came to the district three years ago, was there a process in place?
No, not a, not a formalized process. You know, Dr. Tree, you know a little more about this, can you just speak to it briefly?
Right, one of the things that, when I came on board, we noticed that.
When was that, Chris?
That was last, last year, so this is my second year, so I'd be seventeen. And we noticed that it was pretty much just a, a teacher would say, I would like to read something, and then that would be put on a protected list. And that was one of the first things that I tasked Paul with is to start to see if we can't come up with a process that's going to still give teachers the opportunity to make proposals, but to lean on the strength of their colleagues and say, hey, what are the best ways to use this? And I do think an important point that came up was also, what is the most appropriate level for this particular piece? We may read something and say, this is fantastic, but it, it doesn't belong here, it belongs in this grade level. It's a very hard decision for an individual person to make. And when the process in the past was left solely in one person's hands, it puts a lot of pressure on, on that person. And so one of the things that we tried to do when we met with these teachers and administrators, parents, so on, all the stakeholders that made up this committee, was to try to say, this isn't meant to say no to things. It's meant to add strength to how it will be best used, where it will be best placed, and so that you can know that, again, that thoughtful process Paul mentioned has happened so that a community of peers who are there just to be supportive are going to give you their honest feedback and sign their name to it and say, this is what we believe at this point in time. And so previously, it had been a little bit more just kind of individually, now we're trying to codify that and pull that together.
And I just wanted our public to hear kind of that history. So this is for current requests. What are we doing for our existing supplementals that are being used, that have been used the last three, four years every day? Have we given, said you've got to present these and we'll give you a deadline for next year because, or did you say, what, what did you say?
The volume would be overwhelming. When Paul gave you the timeline of that, one of the concerns I have is that's if it's a single book that comes. Imagine if it's. that's if it's a single book that comes. Imagine if it's three or four books that come in at one point in time, let alone going through a back catalog at any point in time. It's still a limited committee, so it, it, it has to be more for certainly things that we move forward with that are new. Or if there are specific issues or concerns with something, that definitely moves to the front of the line.
So, we actually aren't going back to look at what is our supplemental literature being taught in our classrooms today to see if it meets your criteria for high literacy merit. So.
Are we going back over every single book? No.
Is, is, is that a possibility?
Probably not.
Not to maybe take through that whole process? Because we're going to, some of this, some of the literature we know probably meets it or has been used for so many years and we know it's, you know, used at, at every school.
Well, we're going to have to rely on Paul and his team and the principals who deal with issues on a daily basis to bring to our attention anything that they believe needs to be reviewed. And we'll certainly review it at that point. But to just start and go back over everything, that's, it's just not possible.
But I would, I would say, I think it's possible to do a review of the lists.
Oh, sure.
And with, and with the expertise of the people there and, and the teachers, we can get some good opinions if some, something. And most of the books, the great majority of them, I believe are ones that everybody recognizes and they're not-
Problem.
But a review of the list will help us narrow it down as well as somebody said, yes, there was a problem with this particular book or that and they, as they said, they come to the front. So I think the process of going back is not undoable under the circumstances of reviewing the list, here's some books we don't know, or here's some books that there's been a problem with and focusing on those. And the others that have been no problem and are well-recognized, there's no reason to put them through the process.
I, I, I would think it would be smart to be proactive since we have learned that there hasn't been a process in place for, possibly since two thousand and five, maybe sooner than that.
I'd love to jump in on this, just totally piggyback off it because to that point, clearly, we've, even just the last few years, there's been a lot of changes, a lot of different ways on how we're looking at this. Times have changed significantly. We're in a divisive time in our history. So, I'm wondering how strong those conversations are with the principals, you know, with your team directly every day. Not about a specific book, not about, but how strong are those dialogues saying, okay, let's really assess our culture, our, our new S U S D culture, you know, that's really been significant over the past couple of years? Accountability and, and all those things. And, and just making sure our teachers are reflecting through that new lens, you know, considering the last few years. So I, I guess, I guess I'm asking a little bit of a judgment call on how strong those dialogues are right now or how much we need to maybe amp them up.
If I could just say one thing, so back to your question about all the books. If there is a book that is mentioned to me as a principal that I know has been a long time book and I feel that it's, you know, more, maybe more than one parent or even one parent. After this conversation, I think it's real easy to pick up the phone and say, and I, I call Dr. Treat a lot. Paul, I can call anytime and just say, listen, I have this challenge. What are some really good answers for us? Or, and in my judgment, running the school where even a parent today is saying not real sure about a book, I wanted to know that book right now because I want to be able to say, could you run this through the committee? That, that's what I'd like to do. And maybe make a list. Now, if there's three hundred books, that might be a problem. So what I, I could probably do, and I think Melissa could help with this, is maybe talk as the five principals, what's come up on anybody's radar? Because our book lists are pretty much the same. And a lot of them are twenty-year-old titles that, you know, are good, tried and true. But they're, and then, and then on the other side, I did have a teacher last year say to me, I want to do book studies. I have a library, a librarian who has a book club. I want to do a book club. I want tax credit to pay for these books for our book club. And I look at her and I say, okay, so I need the list. And she kind of looks at me like, so, so understand, every time that comes my way, that is when you talk about a filter. I definitely have a filter in the principal's head. It just kind of comes naturally as a parent as well. So, there are mechanisms for any book that is worried. And the first would be a professional conversation with experts and also the teachers involved. Where, did you know that this came up? And then on the, kind of the other piece of that is the teacher who says, I want to do a book study and I want kids to go out and get their own books to have a, whatever that's called.
Literary circle.
Little, thank you, little circles. I, I, I ask for a list, I, I think about it. I, and I have had students come to me and say, this teacher is doing this, but this teacher is doing that. And so I go back and every time it comes up, I, I don't ignore it. And that was, and thank you, that was my, my last question on this, really, unless there was a real short answer. But how do you assure that equity across the same class? You know, English two oh three or whatever the, the number is. And that the four teachers that are teaching it, that, you know, one teacher's not giving seven books and another's giving two and it's, you know, that, how, I, I, I want that to be looked at also so that when asked, we have an answer that we can communicate to our teachers, which I hope is, we review it. And maybe we are reviewing it annually, so that isn't happening. Obviously, it is if we have not had a process in place and therefore, we can at least know that there is, I'm not saying the exact same book or three to five, but what you don't want is, you know, this, everybody knows that one teacher is the easy teacher and she really doesn't read any of the books. And then you have the one that's the hard teacher. We have to, do have some equity for our standards.
And that's the job, the principal, number one, is to reduce. Is that what's called reducing the variable?
The other thing too is our curriculum maps become those foundation documents which unify us across because those are based off of standards and those were created with teams of teachers representing each of the schools. Those curriculum teams have come together. They've had these same types of conversations horizontally at the same time. So, we have the oversight that's happening from the administrative level and the support from the teaching and learning team. And those curriculum teams are facilitated by our instructional coaches. So, they're helping guide them through the same conversations to make sure that we understand how somebody is intending to use something at one place versus another. It won't be identical and I don't think we want it to be, but it needs to be equitable and it certainly needs to be thoughtful.
So that's part of our ongoing curriculum meetings. Those are the conversations they're having now. What are you doing? That's from a presentation across, around the table at different schools or even as that person there going back and having that conversation. I assign five books and this, and he assigns ten. We need to come to some sort of in-between where, you know, we need to think about that. The teachers don't want to pit themselves against each other either. It's not in their best interest. So those curriculum teams are, yes, the beginning, they worked on curriculum maps, but as a second and third part of that conversation, it is for them to right-size themselves amongst their peers in this district.
Well, and these are supplementals that are outside of curriculum mapping too.
Exactly. So they're in that mean though.
But the rest-
Extra level of thoughtfulness and being careful.
Right. So the representation is around the table and then what, those conversations are now continuing to have, to happen. So they're, they're able to work around the table around that.
Well, I would like to, because I didn't plan on just diving into the ELA area right there. I will say that when this first was brought up, I had a little different vision of, of what was going to be brought to us. I think that's why I was kind of a little shocked about who was all around the table. And thank you for providing the information and taking the time out of your regular schedule to do that. I thought also it was going to be a little bit more about the math adoption as a process so that then we would be looking at that process as we had other curriculum adoptions. But something that I've learned tonight, which I want to confirm is, it appears that we've had a lot of adoption recently. And from listening to everybody, it sounds like our curriculum is pretty well put in place and is very young. Would that be the right word? It would be young, old. It would be young. That we don't have old, old textbooks out there. Science is saying it's probably some of the best in the valley and we don't use textbooks anymore. We have all these kits.
Our high school does need to be updated.
Okay. And but then on this, okay, it says K through eight, but I guess science isn't up, is it not on there?
If you look at, social studies is the oldest.
In social studies-
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six.
And there are a couple of reasons for that. The first reason is, until the state board comes up with the new social studies standards, it does us no good to even start investigating that. Secondly, in social studies, the textbook is not as important as it used to be because there are so many other things to be used in social studies. That it, that's partly why it's a little further down the list rather than next year. So there's a priority piece there. Social studies is also a very expensive one because it's K twelve.
Okay, but since it's not going to be most likely having textbooks and it's more of this supplemental, which so much of it is on the web, is it, is, is there a large, is there still a large cost associated with that? Like it used to be?
Not necessarily.
So, what are we doing, I guess, in that department then? Because we don't want to wait to two thousand and twenty-one to make any new decisions. What are we doing to talk about-
Well, I think-
What the beliefs are and, and the academic philosophy behind what, what we're teaching in social studies?
Well, the first thing is that last year in creating the curriculum maps was the start of literally having teachers look at, these are priority and these are supporting standards. And these are standards. And we're not teaching out of a, just textbook. I'm on chapter five, I'm on chapter six. It's creating those units that they'll be studying that are tied to standards. Then, as a group, we got together during our mapping time and we actually created links and resources that are related to each of the units that we created. That, let's say I'm learning about the Civil War, here's a couple of lessons that would go and hit those standards. I think the great thing now in social studies compared to when I started in, in ninety-five is, there is so much out there. And there's so much out there is kind of a bad thing because then we have to weed through. And what the curriculum teams did is they actually created useful things that, and I've heard from people that started this year, and they're so thankful. Hey, thank you for giving me access to that curriculum map because I have a timeline, I have resources and I have vocabulary and I have everything pretty much I need to go forward and teach sixth grade, seventh grade, second grade.
So then to piggyback on what Board Member Kirby was saying, if we have one of those five percent of, of a teacher out there that may not be teaching to the standard that S U S D has set up, it is truly an HR question. After they've gone through the curriculum. Because the curriculum mapping has, it's finished with social studies?
Yes.
For the most part.
Yes. Well, it's never finished.
It's always, it's our-
It's always being revisited and discussed and-
But if I came in and I said, I want to know what you're teaching in AP World History as a parent, because I'm looking at schools because we're school choice. I could see and I could be confident that my student in tenth grade or whatever, ninth grade, I could look at that curriculum map and I could see what they're teaching, most likely what the supplementals are that they're using.
Now, APs, APs are not directed by us.
You go to the College Board.
It's pretty much, the College Board has decided what will be taught.
Regular American history class.
And that becomes a building principal conversation. So they're having PLC meetings or team meetings or some sort of meetings. They're in classrooms. And, and now, they can, they can have it on their phone. So, for example-
But I'm a parent, see, I'm going to interrupt. I'm a parent and I'm, I'm looking where I want to send my child. So I can go to the curriculum map to find out what they're doing.
And it's divided, if you noticed, by, by quarter. So, again, as a parent or as a principal, if it's first quarter, certain things should be happening in that classroom. So when any of us are doing walkthroughs with them and I say, Chris, I noticed what's happening in social studies. I'm not sure how this aligns to first quarter curriculum map, so just help me understand that. He either can help me understand that, something is different, or he says to his teacher, do you please help us understand why we're teaching something different?
And that, and that's the conversation that you would have about rigor going into the B and D category if you're not seeing that in the classroom.
And there may be a very good reason for it. And then the other part of this that, that we didn't really talk about is the assessment part. So what we've done as a, as a team is that we've aligned the assessment to what's on that map. And so we want to, so, so when they're looking at their benchmark data, it's aligned to what it says. And so when the principals are having those conversations and if they have a team or a grade or that just bombs a curriculum, or a benchmark test. And, and then we have those conversations internally, but the principals have those first to say, how come they didn't pass? How come seventh grade ELA just totally bombed the benchmark? Did you align to that curriculum map? That's another catch for them.
But is that, are their benchmarks also, I didn't think they were any in social studies.
Not yet.
But they're looking at common formative assessments, they're looking at data all the time, their PLCs bring in data. Those are the conversations principals have. I also want to talk about that we've created what I'm calling bumpers for our principals and for our teachers. So if, again, Chris says to me, this teacher is totally off, help in, in social studies. That's when I talk to Chris or Stephen and say, let's get over there and see what we can do to help him. If that's something that he's trying to get back in alignment, we can definitely have that happen. But it has to be ongoing. It has to be happening, they're catching as they're going.
Board Member Kirby?
Yeah, I, well, I just want to ask the principals, the three here, and I'm going to ask you a separate question. Given everything we've talked about today, what I'm hearing is it all comes back to the, the building leader. Do, do you three, just speaking for yourselves, believe you have all the tools and supports you need to deliver in that role?
Absolutely. So, if I may, and then-
Jump in.
Thank you. Board Member Kirby, especially supporting, not only my veteran teachers, but my new teachers as well. When we're looking at and making the distinction between curriculum maps and syllabi, even at the elementary level, looking at what are they, what are they implementing? Having those rich conversations that are very coaching-based, but then knowing I have the experts to my right that I can ask. Perfect example, Diane Murphy, I don't believe is here at the table, but I have some new teachers who needed some extra supports with our units of study that have been, not only I'm knowing you're aware of them, but really richly created and thoughtfully done and amazing. And to say, my teachers are having some questions as they plan ahead through our PLCs and our collaborative grade level meetings, looking at how that's really going to be implemented, not only with getting the resources we need, but what it looks like not only in theory but in action. Diane came, spent the day with my teachers, met with each grade level, and then we debriefed, she and I. So I knew for those look fours, when I go into the classroom, what am I going to be looking? The conversation isn't a one-off. It really is a continuous collaboration. I've never felt not supported or not that I didn't have the resources to get.
And what about the HR piece?
The HR piece is almost probably more constant because if I have a question, I will never, I'll never tackle that alone. Whether you're a rookie or twenty years in as administrator. So for example, calling, whether it be anyone in HR from Dr. Bowman all the way down, to say, you know, I, I don't know if I need, and even calling our supervisors. You know, I, I need to maybe just bounce this off of you, not sure where to go with it. I have my documentation from when I told the teacher X, Y, and Z. What do I do next? What I think I might do, might be very different than they say, you know what, let's hit pause. We need to maybe go a little deeper. And that collaboration is invaluable. I, I will never suffer in silence. I've never had to.
So, so now I'm going to look over here to Dr. Creek Guard then. And Dr. Nance, is there any reason then going forward why we as a board should get repeated complaints from parents on anything we've talked about today? Because I'm hearing the processes will be hopefully up and open, up and running by October, which is Thursday. I'm hearing principals feel like they have the tools that they need. So, what I'm then, my expectation is that this should all be coming to life.
Right, right.
And, and, and I guess I'm looking to you and I'm giving you an opportunity to caveat that expectation right here and now. Because if you don't, I'm walking out the door with it.
So, in a general sense, in ninety-nine point nine percent of the cases, absolutely, things will be taken care of. I mean, I had probably in the last two days, four or five different emails from parents who decided to go right to the top. I send it to Melissa or Ebi or sometimes copy them and send it back directly to the principal if the principal hasn't been involved. And I immediately get response from the principal, I made that contact today, I'm going forward. That's what happens. In point one percent cases, there, there will always- In point one percent cases, there, there will always be, and there has always been in my experience, uh, some people who you will never satisfy. Speaking of the elephant in the room, to address the concerns that are present and doable, we've done. To invite the person in to, because we, the, the, the third biggest concern is complex, full of nuance, is to say, please come in and meet with us to explain this so we can work on it or we can tell you why we're going another direction, but have that conversation. And twice that invitation has gone out and it has never been acknowledged. The things we did to address our immediate concerns were never acknowledged. And instead, the person goes to other ears and goes on and, and, and the concerns are not different. The emails are on a different topic, but the same overall concern. Or the, that's what we've asked ever come in on and it hasn't happened. So, uh, so there is going to be a, and this is a single parent, I don't mean it that way, I mean, there's one parent, one student parent of twenty-three thousand kids in our district. And this concern that, that we have had voiced over and over again, it's coming from one person. And yet we're willing to address that.
Okay, and in all fairness, um, I would agree that since you've been here, you have been willing to address it. You have addressed some of those specific concerns, maybe not all of them, because I've been following over your whole, but, um, that particular parent had been for at least six to eight months coming to this district prior to that and have spoken with many of you in this room.
I understand.
And got nothing. So I'm going to defend a little bit.
That's, that's not true.
Well, I don't know that we, I, I as a board member have not seen, what, what's not true that she got?
That she got nothing. It's the same, we've had the same issues over and over again, the issues have not changed.
But we didn't eat, we didn't implement these processes until months later. We did it, um, some of the, I'm going to credit this individual for where we are today, quite frankly, on some of the processes for approving the summer reading lists.
Absolutely, absolutely agree. She brought a process that I knew had worked in the past and was part of my expectations, but did not know it was not going on.
Right.
So she brought it to, we implemented, but absolutely agree that she brought that to us, yes.
And, and there had been, um, I mean, numerous times.
Numerous times.
There was no response.
And I under, and I under.
Or a response that didn't answer the question.
Yeah, and I under, I understand.
Any actionable, anything actionable.
Frustration of having come in with other people and, and talked to them. I can't.
You can't change that.
Yeah, I can't, I can't change that. I can only control what I can control. And I, and I'm not naive enough to, or think that you're naive enough that I can tell you, if she comes in, I'll take care of all of her concerns. Because she may not like what I have to say. Now, we've also dealt with other parents at, at times who sometimes say they're not getting a response and it really is that they're not getting the response that they want. And so you always have that when it comes to parent complaints too. We still try to work through those and, and get, get the understanding, but we have to have that opportunity to work with.
Fair enough. And I do want to, um, I do want to thank everyone. I, I'm, I'm sitting here today, almost kind of happy we're having this conversation. Because what it tells me is that the vision that the board had to have principals as instructional leaders, to give the teachers the flexibility to meet the needs of the kids in the classroom, it's coming to life. And it comes with, it comes to life with some stumbles along the way and we, we go back to old processes we used to have, we bring them back, we make them time relevant for today, whatever. But I'm, I'm happy we're having this conversation. I'm walking out of here today, um, energized about the S U S D of the future. I just think we're on the right trajectory. And, um, you know, you get these reading lists back and you get, you start elevating the bars in the classroom, it's all quite exciting, so.
I agree too. I, I very much want to highlight, uh, and, and put the focus on all the hard work that's been happening these last couple of years. So many of you on, in, in this team, only been here a couple of years and the amount of work that you've done to help us shift that direction of S U S D, it's not unrecognized at all and we know it's not just because of one person's complaints. It is really because we identified that, that this district needed to focus on our standards, on our academic excellence, on our instructional leadership. We recognized that and we took a lot of work to shift this district in that, and you guys are an incredible part of that team and that movement, a critical part of it. So I don't want us to leave here either without extending our gratitude for all that hard work. I'm sure it's continuing because as you all said, this is all a work in progress and will always be so. So I'll extend that gratitude as well and just let you know that, yeah, it's not unrecognized. But there will always be those that just want to kind of keep complaining, but it is not recognized how different we are than where we were, say certainly when I joined the board. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Board Member Harmon?
So, um, but before we totally wrap up, I have a couple of questions.
I wasn't ending.
There's, there's just three topics I, and we don't need to talk exhaustively about them, but I really am interested in terms of kind of stretching and differentiating ourselves and being the gold standard in public education. So one topic is a little bit related to social studies. And so, um, Stephen, wondering from your perspective, so civics and citizenship, how does that fit into standards? Does it, are there standards? I'm talking more than high school graduation civics exam, that's no standard. I mean, what does that look like?
Well, right now in the, in the older standards, you know, uh, in the eighth grade, they need to learn about the important founding documents. And I think the big push towards our new standards is putting more of that in. Right now in the two thousand and five standards, that wasn't a, a big push in two thousand and five, but with the new standards that are being proposed, um, and will be proposed in the October meeting, that is really the big push. And, you know, really the reason why we're, we're in social studies calling for this change to happen, because really the, the POs are, you know, a document, you know, maybe saying the Bill of Rights, uh, some of the founding documents. It doesn't have a lot of specifics, not that the new, and Dr. Tree can probably add on to some of that because he's also on the committee.
A lot of, you know, if you think about what is the goal of social studies, it's advanced citizenry. It's, it's making certain that students know as they grow up what their role in society is and the impact that they can have. And to know all the founding principles of this country and to push those ideals forward. And the old standards have one of their concepts, major concepts, when I say old standards, the standards we have in place, that has civics, that's a major portion of that. It's taught at multiple levels throughout K-12, not just seniors in government, not just eighth graders, but at different times we talk about what does it mean to be a citizen? What are those roles and responsibilities that you have? And certainly the new proposed standards that all the committee work's been on, Stephen's correct, it's been a major, uh, point of emphasis.
We do have a school, um, Cocopa that has been recognized by the state for their, their civics education. So they are, you know, within our district doing something that's very unique. And there was only, I think, twenty-six schools across the state that were recognized for, and they had specific criteria they had to show. And a lot of it was, you know, things that we, citizenship, uh, things that they were doing at their school level.
So to, to that point, I, I think it's something that's very relevant and very important. And how do you, and what does that gold standard start to look like in a K-five, a six-eight, a nine-twelve, right? Because there's different messages.
Sure.
That come with, you know, an advanced citizenry. So those are, do we, are we beginning to see standards and expectations?
Well, we have a draft, we have a draft on the table that we've had on the table for about six months, um, calling for a lot of those things at, at those levels, we're just at a, at a bypass.
So do we have to wait for ADE to twenty-two, twenty-three or?
No, well, we have a meeting in October that the, the standards will be brought to the state board to approve, not approve, uh.
I mean, we can always exceed standards. We don't really have to wait for standards, so.
And, and the two thousand and five standards in hand have civics throughout, have, have these very same types of things that are in there. It's just a matter of, back to supplemental, making certain that we have the types of documents and tools so that students get a chance to actually experience this as much as possible instead of merely sitting and hearing about it.
So I'm, I'm confused. Is this, at Cocopa, is it embedded in their history classes or is it a specific, a civics class they take?
No, I think it's, uh, the group of actually social studies teachers and the school got together and filled out an application. It was an application process.
Like a grant or something?
No.
It's more of a recognition, they.
Yeah, a recognition of what they're doing. So more or less, there's probably a lot of schools that are doing a lot of the same things, but they haven't actually gone through the process.
So how is that reflected in the curriculum maps? How is that program at Cocopa reflected?
It's not a known program.
Not a recognition.
I guess, I guess that's. Well, no, but what they're doing is different from what the other schools are doing.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
It's just, they just codify it.
They, they've actually gone through an application process to say, we're doing this, we're doing this.
They're still teaching.
It isn't necessarily in the classroom.
Right, I understand, but I would think if they're getting an award for something they're doing well, then the other middle schools would be interested in that.
They got, they got an award because they went through the process.
I understand that.
Applying for that, acknowledging.
Can I, can I add a little bit?
Yeah.
Just Lisa first. It, and this may be, answer a lot of questions too, but it, at Desert Mountain and at all the schools, every teacher's assigned an evaluator, so we go by department. So I'm the evaluator for social studies and there's now, thank you, a lead for social studies. So, and, and foreign language. So in the same vein, and I've been a social studies teacher a long time, last year I asked each department to write down, what do you stand for as a department? What's your goal with kids? And it's pretty cool, excellence in science and critical thinking. And so we have these, and so what this grant can, or this recognition, it's sort of like the seal of biliteracy. If you, if you want to do this, you fill this out, you don't have to take a test, but you have to have criteria that you meet. So, and, and in a high school, you can say, well, we have this club and this club and this club and this much participation. And we do these things, and student council and student government, they take care of things like voter registration or other demonstration of citizenship. So in the vein of the question, which I think is, how do we teach the standards of civics if they're not written here? I would like to say that a lot of people go into teaching social studies because that is what they want to do.
Right.
And they want to forward the country and the movement to equality and justice. So if we go ahead and say, um, where are we? The, the teachers do exceed the standards and they are embedded and in, uh, what, what we're really trying to do as citizens in the social studies department is get the students to be able to, just like in the science, come up with the answer on their own once they've seen everything, and exactly what you said. That's part of citizenship too, is to understand documents and be able to discern, come up with an opinion. So in our department, we're having all the students, kind, it's a little bit rudimentary, but the claim, the evidence and the response, those, that kind of writing, that kind of thinking is there and we're actually going to have benchmark tests on those. We, they, everybody said, okay, we'll do it. So we're actually going to be looking at the claim is worth twenty percent, the evidence is worth forty, and the resolution is worth forty. And, and the, the students are being graded across the whole department on that same standard for reasoning. Uh, and, and it's complicated because we're not grading their opinions, we're grading their ability to discern from documents and create an opinion, which is not something you can always just test and pull out of thin air until you really start to teach it. And so that, I, I hope that would answer the question of how far you can go without having to have these standards adjusted or, or go beyond.
It, it partially does.
Okay.
It's, it's how do you, my question is, if there's a great practice, how do you institutionalize it?
Right.
Right? And how do you pick which one? I mean, I happen to think this is a particularly important, relevant one.
Sure.
And Cocopa has, in the spirit of innovation, identified something that's actually being recognized at a state level. So how do we do more of it intentionally as opposed to, right?
There are a couple of ways, and one of them is, that's part of what Stephen's job is to do. We talked about one of the roles that coaches can have is to cross pollinate. And you take really good ideas that are happening in one place and you bring them to teachers who are looking for ideas in another part of your district. Also with those same curriculum team meetings that we're talking about, beyond just making maps and doing the, kind of the foundation document work, those meetings also are about practices. They're all about approaches, they're all about what's working for you, that's something that can benefit others. Along with that, we also have times coming up here on the fifteenth of October, we're going to be doing vertical articulation to make sure that all levels are able to be part of these same conversations. So any chances that we get along those lines, we're trying to make sure that no good idea lives in one place alone, but rather it's something that can be done across the district and that people can feel supported, they know that there are people, peers that have done it in some places else, and if they aspire to do that, they certainly are, are able to.
Well, thank you. Um, this is a practical next step. I think it'd be great to recognize Cocopa at board meeting and whomever's behind this program, because we really do want to recognize innovation and great ideas and then figure out how do we, not layer one more thing on our teachers, right, but how to embed it into the curriculum and standards in a really enriching way.
And I would like to think that as we go across the district, we would find those kinds of elements in every school, but different programs based on what they have identified as their needs to improve whatever issue it is on campus that they were having at Cocopa that, we need more of civics education and somebody else had, had, we need more writing across the curriculum. We, you know, so across the, across the district, we can find all these extra, extra pieces that were homegrown. And I, and I think that's an important element that we keep as well.
Can I, thank you. Can I add just two more, just really quick topics? I just wonder if they exist, because I think once again, they're really relevant in K-12 now. And one is around healthy relationships. I don't know if that falls in PE, but to me, that's one of the very relevant, very important topics that, how do we embed that once again, age appropriate, K-five, six-eight, nine-twelve, what does that look like? And my second one would be around mindfulness and ESL. I just think those are two life skills that are part of creating outstanding citizenry and incredible human beings.
Explain mindfulness and ESL, please.
Mindfulness from, um, just emotional, social learning, how to.
Emotional, emotional, not English. I was looking English as a second language.
I know, me too. But, but I really am talking about mindfulness and how to use that as a tool. And I'm guessing once again, those are two non-standard topics, right? But incredibly important in building human beings, right? So how do we?
And that was part of the discussion that we had with the school psychologists last week or the week before.
Yesterday.
About their role, yeah. But, and, and, and looked at alternatives, uh, looking at, at bringing back social workers at schools that need them. And, you know, we, so it is a discussion that, that we are having.
Say, say PVIS, you love to say PVIS.
Give me the mic, say it.
Not to belabor it, but it's a culture. It's a, it's a culture of a campus, it's a culture of a community. It's not a psychologist or another social worker, I, that's my opinion. It is a culture. It's not a psychologist or another social worker. I, that's my opinion. It is a culture that the instructional leader at that site nurtures and, and demands.
I believe that.
Board member Puraburg gave me the go-ahead to go ahead and, and talk a little bit about our positive behavior intervention supports. And that's always an area of refinement depending on the campus. And so all campuses are at a different area within it. But that is our foundation for setting behavioral expectations, that culture of responsibility, respect. And so you begin there in that tier one and then look at student needs through student assistant programs and the social emotional learning. Um, and some of our elementary campuses have also done, yeah, I'm not moving.
We do have our outside council waiting on us, so just keep that in mind.
So, so absolutely. PBIS, social emotional learning, mindfulness, mental health in the schools, um, and trauma-informed care are some of the areas in which student services will continue to focus on.
To support those principal cultures.
To support the principal cultures.
So I'm just going to bring these two items up and it'll be short. Uh, Dr. Nance, you brought up that there are policies that need to be rewritten because they haven't been looked at in a long, long time. When do you anticipate bringing those?
I'm going to have to defer to Ms. Marshall on that.
Yeah.
Are they coming from you?
No, they're coming from our chairman.
She, she does the policy revisions.
No, the policy revision, but you have to talk about what you want. Oh, you've already talked to her about what needs to be changed.
We've talked, we've talked about the need for some changes to be made, so it's a matter of finding when, you know, she's got time to work on that, because she needs to be present to get those conversations.
Board member Beckham, if I may, um, we have had a couple of initial discussions about the language and what policies are out there and, and how we compare to other districts. Um, I anticipate we'd need a couple more, um, meetings discussing with these great people who I've been able to listen to for quite a bit, um, just to make sure that we are reflecting what's really happening out at our schools. So we have some plans for, um, other policies in October, November. I'm thinking November, December, um, for first reads of these.
Okay, so within the next, within the next semester.
The changes are minimal.
Right, right. And there are also some statutory concerns. There's some laws have changed and so we always want to make sure that our, that our policies are in line with state statutes, so.
We brought them up, so I wanted to find out when they would be, be coming before us, since that's weird, that's what we're, the function of this is to govern and to really look at the policies. The, um, second one is, is, and I'm not even going to get into it, is the math adoption. And I know that, that you had mentioned that there were going to be maybe some, possibly some amendments to how it's being handled. Is that what you're referring to? And when will those start to be seen and if you would, if, if it's appropriate to mention what those changes might be?
Next time they meet, there will be, there will be some changes in the recording.
In the recording? Okay, good. And then lastly, I would love to have a review or a discussion on writing and what we are doing so that we could learn informational, how we have, um, improved the writing. What we're hearing is that when the kids are getting to college, the majority of what they're doing is writing and they're not prepared. And so I'd love to have that discussion, you know, from the educator's standpoint, and it's a really exciting one. So I know that they improved their writing over the last year or two, and so I'd love to hear about it.
Any additional questions?
Just one comment.
I know, I know. I was afraid to ask, but go ahead.
No, I just want to think.
We just love being in front of a panel like you guys. This board really does love it. But, okay, board member Hartman.
Well, uh, it's just gratitude. I just want to share just the amazing work that you're doing and I would encourage you to continue to stretch the envelope. I, I mean, it's a high achieving leadership team and we expect high achieving students. And, um, from a board perspective, I would support that and, yeah, maybe we'll stub our toe along the way. Sometimes it won't be perfect. Innovation never is, but, um, really appreciate and would encourage you to continue to do that.
All righty.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you all. I'll let you guys all go before I get into this very long motion that.
Thanks for, so please feel free to leave.
Thank you.
But thank you. Okay. All right.
It's Michelle's.
I know, I know.
I was going to say, you can just refer to the notice and say that.
I can just refer the, I thought I had to read. I'd have to read every single agenda item.
As, as.
Executive session, as posted in the notice.
All righty, excellent. Okay. Because I, because I saw this in the center today. That's all right. We're going to make, I'm going to go ahead and I will make a motion that the governing board convene executive session for the agenda items for A, B, C, D, E, and F as posted in the notice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Kravitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. We will convene an executive session. This was given to us at that. Thank you. All right, we are back. Time is six-thirty-nine and we have reconvened our special meeting. Um, our first action item is, um, six A, approval of criteria for performance-based evaluation of acting superintendent to be attached to his contract as exhibit A. I, at this time, will make a motion that the governing board approve the exhibit A that we directed in executive session. All this needed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Our next action item is, uh, six B, approval of contract for interim chief financial officer. Ms. Marshall, did you have clarification?
Madam President, I would suggest that, uh, if you want to move to approve that, that you move to approve it as, uh, as you directed me to revise it in executive session.
Okay, so moved.
Is that, is that with or without?
It's with.
With, it is.
But we added the balance term.
The term.
Okay, all right.
Can you do that in discussion?
Pardon me?
Okay. Oh, this is discussion. Did you have comments regarding the contract?
No, no, no. I just, I just clarifying.
But should we make those clarifications public?
Let's see if I. The, um, as far as his, um, work, um, schedule.
Right, right.
That clarification.
The length of the contract being variable.
Yeah, his work schedule.
His work.
But that doesn't come into the motion.
Oh, do I have, do I have comments publicly? I didn't realize this was public. I still thought we were private.
Nope. Nope.
All right. Yeah. Yes, I have comments. Thank you. I, I want to express, uh, my personal gratitude as well as a gratitude for, of the organization for Mr. Gad to, uh, delay his retirement further and, and come here and help us out in this position. We appreciate his work very much. It is understandable, uh, that to have somebody of his qualifications, um, that, that we are, are paying a salary, uh, of a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the year. And his contract does, so that you know, does have, uh, a contingency of a, uh, four-day, uh, work week, although he is on call, uh, during the other three days of the week. And it does have the, uh, other, uh, benefits due to cabinet members.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
And do we talk about the permanent role?
And, and we will be, and we will think, uh, and we will be, uh, posting, uh, and Mr. Gad is aware of this and, and, uh, and certainly is supportive of it, that we will be posting the position of chief financial officer shortly to, to be able to, uh, hit the premium hiring season and candidates come in and so that we can, uh, get somebody started as soon as possible in that role, but certainly no later than July first.
Excellent. All right. So if that's it, I will make a motion that governing board approve the interim chief financial officer's contract as directed and amended in executive session. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, board member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. All right, so we then move on to board action. Seven A, approval of request for proposal number nineteen oh oh three, custodial services contracted. Dr. Precard, did you have any comments on this or do we have any questions?
I think it's, I, I, I do think, uh, we have gone, uh, we've had some excellent discussions and, and investigation into this contract during my time here. The concerns of the board members have, have been taken very seriously that this firm or any firm working, uh, in our schools has full security measures and background checks so that their employers, and, and included in that is, uh, reporting to us on those background checks, so that their employees, uh, have the same assurance of, uh, student safety and security that all of our employees do. At this point, uh, ABM has indeed, uh, verified that the requirements we put on their extension of, uh, further background checks, complete background checks and reporting was done and is also included in this contract, uh, at no additional cost. So I, I recommend ABM Custodial Services for, for the, uh, contract as stated, uh, the estimate, for the estimated cost of year one at three million eighty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Board member Beckham, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, I had asked some questions that I was hoping, uh, would be included in the proposal and I, I hope in the future it will be to explain the recommendations as to why, I know we were given a rubric, rubric, but to go in a little bit more detail as to the recommendations of why this firm over other firms. And then also when looking at cost, to look at past costs to know that, was it an increase? You know, was there a four percent increase? Was there a decrease? Um, and so.
We were.
Yeah, I thought we did, I thought we did talk about that.
We did have that.
I think it was stated that there is, there is a cost due to the minimum wage increase. And, uh, in, in terms of, um, why we're choosing this firm based on, on that rubric, this firm has the most experience working in school district, uh, custodial services and has in fact been employed by this district for, I think I heard seventeen years, don't quote me on that, but, but for, for a long time and have been responsive to our requests for any changes in their service. It was the unanimous choice of the review committee.
All right, thank you.
I think they all, maybe type up. They also had the personnel and enough employees to service all of our schools and some of the other offerers did not, if I recall the conversation correctly.
Well, there wasn't full confidence that they would be able to hire to, to have that, but, but that was part of the rubric, I believe.
Thank you. So at this time, are we ready for a motion?
Um, sure. I'll move to accept the RFP number nineteen zero zero three custodial services. Or that we approve the award of RFP nineteen zero zero three custodial services to Fender ABM Inc., doing business as ABM Texas General Services. The estimated contract amount for year one is three million eighty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you, board member Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Hartman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Right, we next move on to our action items that were amended for our, on our agenda. Seven B, um, approval of selection criteria for superintendent. This obviously goes back to our discussion on Tuesday. Do you have any questions or comments at this time?
I'll start. This is, yeah, this is tough to, okay. Well, and I think, I see Kim editing. I just quickly compared the content to what we agreed on. What's not on here is the language of, um, mature district in a competitive school choice environment. That was one of the, I think it ended up being number three. I think we can easily be worked into.
That, that's experience in?
Yes. Experience in a mature district in a competitive school choice environment.
And I think we, can I add to that? Board member Hartman? All right, and we had already, we had also talked about in that, in defining that as, um, experience with a two-hundred-million-dollar-plus bond and annual budget. So that'll fit in with that general description. Right. So I'll bring in the point that, um, I remember Mr. Jacobson pointed out that as far as the size of a district and this language is in here in the last bullet point, in a district of equivalent sizes SUSD, it, it might be easy to simply add on, uh,
The bond.
District, if you have equivalent size of SUSD in a competitive market or, I mean, that might be, that's part of that last one.
Yes.
Place to add that.
We all said.
You do want to add the one of the budget. That's a separate.
I would add that as the fifth bullet, to the fifth bullet point, from our district size, equivalent size, are we talking budget size or student size?
Or geography.
Geography size, yes.
It's, it's all of the above.
Yeah.
This is very not close to.
Yeah, I don't think this is.
Yeah. Okay, so there's also something that's missing on here. We voted on, um, if highly effective communicator is committed to a communication.
We, I don't think that made it.
It didn't make it?
I don't think it made it. I looked, I made a picture. I took pictures.
We're going to get out my list.
All right, so while you're looking up that, I would, I'll look at bullet point two. I think it's hard to understand. What do you all think about, this point was about data-driven decision-maker? I said, data-driven decision-maker with a track record of increasing academic outcomes and excellence through the use of data. I think that's much more clear than how it's stated right now.
I like that. It's more, it's more direct.
Okay, yeah. So I can share that with you, Sandra. Do you want me to re-read it?
Okay.
If you, if you have it written down, just send it to me.
Okay. Give this to you right here.
So I know I won't miss anything.
Okay. The accountability centered seems a bit long and lengthy. I think that needs to be worded.
So I'll, let me just read to you the, the ones that we agreed on and what we wrote down. The first one was simply committed to district strategic plan. I question, do we want to specifically call out core values because, yes, it's part of the plan, but the plan is much broader than that.
Yeah, now what I, so to that point, one possible alternative is committed to SUSD strategic plan and demonstrated alignment with core values. So it leaves the whole plan intact and says, you got to model it from the top.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Is that okay?
But if, if someone's looking at the, how would they get?
We can list them. We can, but it's more than just the values.
It's, it's, it's that this individual's looking at this saying, is this something that fits who I am and how can I demonstrate?
Do they do that through? We conclude the four values, growth-minded, student-centered, growth-minded, humble and responsive.
Or. But you don't have to include them because this person is going, is going to do what I do. As soon as I saw the word core values, I went to the webpage.
Or even strategic plan, you're going to go and say, okay, well, is there strategic plan and then do, do my values align with theirs? And do I think I'm going to add value there?
Right.
But I do like her word demonstrate.
Yeah.
Um, committed to.
Committed to SUSD strategic plan and demonstrated alignment with the core values.
How, demonstrated commitment to SUSD strategic, uh, because that means it's, I.
Demonstrated alignment to the core values means that they then look at those four values and then will show us that they are student-centered, humble, responsive. If, if that's how it's written, that's how I would read it, because then they would say, I have to possess those four core values and demonstrate those to you.
But here's where I get hung up. Sorry, but we're leaving out the whole clause on meeting the needs of individual students. And if, if you're just going to put core values, to me, it's, oh, okay, so it's much bigger than just the values. It's everything that was on that sheet.
Right, is that the strategic plan?
It's, yeah, it's that one pager we all have, that playbook.
Well, we, I mean, it's two sentences. You could actually, instead of saying strategic plan, which includes, or which focuses on da-da-da and demonstrated, so.
Thank you. So it's which focuses on our core purpose, core values and business, business definition and strategic anchors.
Core purpose is, yeah, all, all that.
All of it. It's all of it.
Well, I was going to say, you could actually be really clear and just say, instead of core purpose.
of core purpose, that is committed to ensuring all individual learners reach their full potential.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's pretty much it.
Right.
And then, don't worry about that, and then you've got the four.
Perfect.
Okay.
Plan.
To ensure all-
Yep, drop that up. Okay, so number two, that was my picture. That was number one. Number two, we just simply said data savvy.
We changed that one. We got that correct.
We got that one done. Okay, number three, we said innovative risk taker.
That one might be a little worse, I think.
Number four, we'll come back, let me just go through these. Number four, um, what, what is it? We had two number threes. The other one that we put a number three by was experience with mature district in a competitive school choice environment.
Okay.
And then the other one was accountability. We said committed to demonstrates experience in a culture of accountability.
And that demonstrated experience, I think is important. But that ties into more of asking the interview question.
Yeah, and we all, and then we talked about the fact that we wanted evidence of all of this and that it was implicit in everything. So that we didn't want to specifically say we want evidence in just one particular area because we were expecting it in all areas.
You could kind of, on that, on number four, accountability center, just do the first sentence, must possess the highest ethical standards and integrity is focused on personnel and professional priorities, period. And then the rest kind of speaks for itself. It kind of is tied in there. I don't know that the other two, I mean, it continues to clarify it, but that can be clear, it's just too long.
It's too blah, blah, blah. Be accountable to self, does, do I really need to say that?
What you had said at the meeting-
Get rid of all of that and just keep the first sentence.
Kim, at the meeting, you had, for, you had said committed to and demonstrated experience in a culture of accountability. And that was number four. That was it, not all of.
I like that.
Correct.
It was short and sweet.
Yeah, and if you wanted to add anything, it would just be the highest ethical standards. Say it again, Sandra. Melissa?
Committed to and demonstrated experience in a culture of accountability.
Well, that means they have to come from a cult, they have to come from a district with accountability and then be able to demonstrate it. That's how I would read that statement.
Which is good. Can we just, you want me to just replace that? Okay. All right, then do we ca, had we captured mature district in a competitive school choice environment anywhere? We got that?
Wait, which one?
The last one.
If, if we add to the last one.
Working in a mature district.
Yeah, in fact, that's silly empirical evidence.
I mean, that shouldn't be on the-
It's, it's experience with, experience with, um-
I think they were tying, I think the purpose was to tie in the request of, I think, your phrase was empirical evidence.
Right.
I think that was their goal.
Kind of agreed that that would just be within-
I can read you what you all said in, which one. Sandy said experience with mature district in a competitive school choice environment. Kim added large unified district superintendent experience, 20K plus, 200, never speak 200, 20, oh, 20,000. And the other one was 16, 14, experience with diverse student population, that was Sandy. And number 24 was Kim, 200 million plus bond and budget experience.
And that all got rolled in.
That all got rolled into one.
So can you control it?
Yeah.
Because we, I remember we debated on 20,000 or 15,000.
That was number four.
And he came up with equivalent size.
Or was it number, no, that was number five.
That's a lot broad.
That was number five. All that was number five.
So he called that down to empirical evidence of success, working in a district of equivalent size.
So I think, listen, because I think there may be a, a, a couple of words missing, but I said, experience with a unified K-12 district of similar size in a competitive choice environment with the-
Are you talking about the last one?
With the 200 plus budget?
Number-
Yeah, I like that.
And you could, then really the bond is a separate issue.
Well, if he's been in a district of comparable size, then the budget's going to be-
With that size of the budget, they're going to pass.
Actually, in most places, budget would be greater.
Yeah, competitive.
I think you should have captured the word diverse.
Yeah.
Because that's, that was the word, yeah. There's a lot of homogeneous districts out there.
But the equivalent, do you want to say instead of size enrollment? Because size, like we said, size can be geographical, it could be budget enrollment.
Yep, got it, okay. So I think I've got experience with a unified K-12 district of similar enrollment-
Right.
-in a diverse and competitive choice environment with experi, then with $200 million budget and bond.
But you're saying you don't need to add the budget.
The bond would be separate, but the budget's going to be similar.
Not greater.
Just because of the enrollment size.
So if it's similar size, you don't need to quantify it, are you saying? Okay. And that you were also saying that you'd assume if you had that kind of experience, you have large bond experience?
Not necessarily.
Maybe call that out.
Yeah, not, if they're, if they're in a mature district that is consolidating and not building, you know, doesn't have both, then they wouldn't have a lot of bond experience.
I think I should throw that in then because that's obviously a pretty big requirement. So, and 200 million plus-
Yeah.
-bond experience.
Do we get?
So.
Okay.
So motion, yeah, I was going to say, you want me to add it to her?
I approve what Kim wrote.
What she said.
Yeah, it's getting late.
Thank you, Kim, for doing that.
Okay. All right. So are we good trusting that that will get recorded and we can just-
Who seconded?
I, hold on. I, I will make a motion that the governing board approve the selection criteria for superintendent as amended this evening and captured. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, board member Beckham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion pa, uh, Kim, you're an aye, right?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero.
So on, on seven C, I don't believe we need that approval for job posting, I don't